Everyone should be admitted now.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening. I am calling this public hearing to order at 6:00 PM in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40 in the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code, ordinances, Chapter 7-1.4. Excuse me. The Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing this evening, November 20th, my gosh, 2024, to review the following projects and determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public of private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearings will be followed by a regular meeting, and in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access, excuse me again, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comments on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in, you cannot use the platform. You can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. For the record, my name is Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Could staff please identify themselves?
Elena Edimary with the Environment Department.
Deedee Hernandez with the Environment Department.
With the Environmental Department.
Great, thank you. I'll call the role of commissioners who are present. Commissioner Sullivan?
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Linay?
Amy Linay.
Commissioner Richmond?
Alice Richmond.
Commissioner Herbst?
Ian Herbst.
Okay, great, thank you. The first item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number 0062011 in Boston. File number 2024-033 from Fort Point Associates on behalf of Redgate for the proposed construction of a sixth-floor multifamily residential building with ground floor retail, stormwater management system, open space enhancements, and streetscape improvements located at 1141 Bennington Street in East Boston. Resource areas are land subject to coastal storm flowage, coastal bank, 25-foot waterfront area, 100-foot salt marsh area, 100-foot buffer to coastal bank. This has been continued from the November 6, 2024 hearing. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Good afternoon, Chair Parker. My name is Katie Moniz from Fort Point Associates. We're here on behalf of Redgate. Liz Baio of Redgate is also with me this evening.
Great, thank you. So I think where we left off last time is we were working through some special conditions. And I know that Elena has been in touch with you and gone back and forth a little bit. Did you want to, did you want to report out on your perspective of how things are evolving here?
Sure, Elena, I'm not sure if that's for you or for me from our side.
No, that was for you first.
Okay, great.
Yeah, you have before.
So I am reporting back that we have had great dialogue with the Boston Conservation Commission staff since our last meeting. We've had the opportunity to review a draft set of conditions and to follow up with any clarifications needed from commissioners in the meantime. I think we've come to a place where we have some mutually agreeable conditions in which the commission might be able to move forward. And Elena, I'll let you chime in as well.
Agreed, yes. So just to recap from the last hearing, those conditions were provisions for an environmental monitor, which again is a sort of third-party person hired by the proponent who would provide periodic reports to commission staff to be able to sort of see how the work is progressing and make sure that erosion controls are in place, that any impacts to the salt marsh are noted, things like that. We will also be including a condition which requires details on dust control and stormwater and dewatering controls. We're also going to be looking for an executed, excuse me, an executed design and maintenance agreement on the road alignment, and that would be an agreement on the design and the maintenance between the proponent and the MBTA, as well as the proponent and DCR. We will also be looking for the installation of a construction fence, which would be replaced by a permanent fence on the west perimeter of the roadway, which again, that's the area between Austin Avenue and Belle Isle Salt Marsh. Following the completion of state and local review processes, the applicants will be submitting any final design plans, and those would include any modifications or additions to the project. And lastly, we would also be, we would also be including a condition which would specify the type of signage that we would want either near the salt marsh or closer to the building, sort of describing to people, future residents, the area that they live in, information about the salt marsh, and how to best coexist with it.
Okay, thank you, Elena. So just a couple of things to add there. I think in the condition regarding the environmental monitor, which I just realized also happens to be the name of the publication that provides notice, state notice of projects, I guess. Wow. So fitting. So that would include annual reports for three years following building occupancy on the health of the resource area?
That's correct, so.
Yeah, and efficacy and integrity of the best management practices?
Correct, yes.
Yep, okay. And protocols will be approved by staff?
Correct.
Okay, so that's ongoing. Okay, a few other things I would just add. We've gotten some public comments, and thank you from Friends of the Belle Isle Marsh regarding proposed conditions, and you will certainly be able to testify to these when we get to the public part of this hearing. I did want to mention that many of the conditions that you are suggesting are covered either in our special conditions or in our standard conditions, specifically perpetual maintenance conditions. So, you know, anybody who occupies the building, any owner. And again, these conditions, they run with the land, not just ownership. So if this is turned over as a condominium, I don't know what the final plans are. These obligations rest with the condominium association or anybody who assumes ownership. And also, the maintenance conditions are perpetual. So when the construction work stops, conditions regarding, you know, maintenance of the roadway area, areas sensitive to salt marsh, areas on the property itself continue forth, so they don't just stop when the project is built. And as far as like construction protocols, there is a construction management plan that staff will be reviewing. I assume that you also submitted a construction management plan to the BPDA for your approvals. So construction is, construction is going to be heavily monitored. I assume, are you going to have an LSP on site to characterize soils? Do you need that here for my merging projects?
Liz is trying to come off on you here.
Sorry. We don't anticipate a need to characterize soils at this point.
Okay, that's good news. Okay, okay. And and I think, Elena, you mentioned this, the design of the road. Question on that, what is, what is your understanding with the T and DCR? So MBTA owns a significant portion of the road where we're suggesting road alignment? What have your discussions been up until this point?
So we have been in touch with the T. They have submitted the request for a condition which we had flagged during the last hearing. But beyond that, they hadn't shared more specific feedback, which is because they don't have specific plans for the Orient Heights Station yet. They know that they're going to have to do something with the resilience of the site in the future. They are, I think that that's why the condition requiring some sort of agreement between the proponent and the T for both the maintenance of the road and the design would be helpful since they don't have those sort of set in stone yet.
Okay, Katie, Lizbeth, have you had any discussions with the MBTA?
We've had the opportunity to communicate with both MBTA and DCR throughout the process prior to the middle of the notice of intent and following up here as we've had to make some minor changes to the plans. At this point, I would say what Elena noted is correct, which is that they will continue to review this as they go through their own construction site access and licensing process. But the alignment relocation was minor in nature and still meets the widths and requirements that they need in the space. If there were any more minor tweaks, we would certainly come back to the commission again in coordination likely with their resiliency efforts.
Okay, yeah, and I think that the special condition that the T offered up to us is really operates by a matter of law anyway, if anything is going to, whether it be, and I noticed in the FBIM letter here, they talked about paths and things like that over by the salt marsh. I mean, those would all require a separate application or NOI to the Conservation Commission, so that would be something that couldn't just be done. The, and part of the trick here, I guess, the tricky part here with the T is some of the road alignment that we are asking for to mitigate impacts on the salt marsh do fall within their property. So we want to make sure that we know that those alignment, that alignment will be able to be done before construction as opposed to, you know, building the project and then saying, you know, oh, the T wouldn't give us permission to align that portion of their property. So we want to know much sooner rather than later so we can figure out what to do at that point. But as Katie said, I mean, these are minor modifications. I would hope that, that the T would not just summarily withhold any sort of permission there. And then I do wonder about, well, I guess because people using this project don't rely on that portion of the road for access, you probably don't have any rights to improve the T property itself as sort of a, because it is their property, number one. But if it was a roadway that you used, I think you would be able to, as a matter of law, statutory law, improve the roadway as long as you didn't impinge on their rights as well. But I don't think that's the case here. Because you're never going up that far in the roadway, right? You don't anticipate that?
Correct. The intention here is obviously to benefit the continued access to their gate. We will have in place, though, our licensing with MBTA and our review with DCR prior to any construction. So we will be able to give it to Conservation Commission and the staff on the approved agreements before we start any construction.
Okay, final thing for me. There was, I saw a discussion regarding MEPA approval here. I mean, I looked through the MEPA regs. I'm somewhat familiar with them. I didn't see where you triggered any thresholds for MEPA review. Did you want to comment on that?
I would agree with your assessment. This project does not trigger thresholds for MEPA.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, Elena, anything else from you?
I also just wanted to note, perhaps a bit preemptively, but just given the amount of public engagement that we've had from folks in the neighborhood, just wanted to thank everybody for their thoughtful comments. I think that the collaboration between the community organizations and the proponent is really encouraging and makes for a better project. And as the project progresses, I hope that, yeah, that folks continue to share their thoughts with commission staff so that we can, you know, see the results of this be the best that they can be.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I just want to remind members of the public, our review doesn't stop here. There'll be, you know, 123 conditions where, that we have discussed regarding this project. Staff needs to inspect the project before construction. There's still a lot of interaction. And, you know, clearly, if there's any deviations or any violations of the Act or the ordinance, this is a highly scrutinized area. You know, you have a lot of eyes on it. So I don't think that anything that, you know, I don't expect a proponent would be enacting any violations. But on the chance that there is a violation, I think that it would be brought to our attention pretty quickly. And want to echo what Elena said about having a robust community process. I find, no matter what the project, it always ends up being better in the end with that dialogue. So with that, I'd go to Commissioner Sullivan.
Yeah, and maybe I'm a little confused, but I thought last week the Public Improvement Commission confirmed that that roadway was a private way open to public travel, giving the public the right to go down it. And if we wanted to change any of that lining grade that was established at any given time, Public Improvement Commission would have to either abandon it for public use, and then they could basically do what they want, the landowners could, or get a new line and grade. Elena, is anything follow-up with Todd Liming on that?
Yes, so we've been in touch with them, and Katie, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think that the project team was aware coming into CONCOM review that this would require PIC review.
Correct. We are aware that we will need to appear before PIC.
Right, so if PIC says, well, no, we don't like this little curve you're doing, or, you know, who's going to be responsible for water, who's going to own what, you're coming back to us then and saying, well, all bets are off for.
Well, correct, if we did need to make any further design changes, we would appear before the Conservation Commission again to amend it. I think, you know, based on our dialogue to date, we're feeling fairly comfortable that the changes are minor in nature. But we do agree, if we do have to make changes, we will appear before the Conservation Commission again.
I just, I just bring it up that the Water and Sewer has a interceptor running down that pipe. And of course, any roadway changes that make us not be in a road so we can do maintenance, or both that and the water pipe we got, we would object to PIC. We sit on PIC, so that could get tricky. The other question I had is assuming everybody agrees, and this is the best project they've ever seen. We then have a trench where the water runs off this private road, and you capture a water in an 18-inch deep, one foot wide, or maybe 18-inch wide, crackstone trench. Correct? Before it gets to the Belle Isle Marsh? That's what you showed us.
We have a gravel trench along the bottom portion of the Austin Avenue right away.
Right. So that may be sitting on MBTA or DCR land, that piece. Is that correct?
It's on MBTA's land because they own in full that portion of the Austin Avenue corridor.
Right, so now the conditions that say forever, you got to keep that clean and working and looking at it, checking it out and all that, run with the property at, on anything. So is the MBTA going to give to us to say, we're going to let these guys come and make sure that this thing works so that the water running off this road onto our property into this trench, when it gets filled up with silt, somebody's got to be cleaning it. And MBTA certainly isn't going to take on any new obligations. So how, how is that all, all that work? I'm just confused.
Yeah, yeah. My thought on that was that the agreement that we're requiring before construction, the maintenance agreement with the three parties, DCR, MBTA, and the proponent would, the way that I had this worded, would allocate those responsibilities. We would know who has the responsibilities, and we would be getting, I guess, on that, we'd be getting some reports, right? Yeah, maintenance frequency and logs detailing maintenance activities. So I think the answer to your question is that special condition regarding the road alignment design and maintenance agreement between the three parties?
Yep. So, yeah, no, I understand that, but say the maintenance agreement lies with MBTA. So we're going to put all our trust and values at the MBTA with all their other issues. We're going to be out there making sure that this thing works so we don't put pollutants into Belle Isle Marsh. If, you know, if it were to later with the, the proponent, you know, they hire a contractor, they just added an HOA fees, or however they're building all this. I just get nervous that we're putting together something later and, and does it fail? Because a big agency has it, and they, they don't live up to their agreement. Not that we've ever seen DCR or MBTA not meet every one of their obligations.
Correct.
So.
So I wonder if that brings up the point, like with these BMPs, and I'll go to the proponent here. You know, I think in the agreement, we probably want to see that you are, at the very least, backstopping those responsibilities. So if there is a trench that needs to be cleaned quarterly or annually, whatever the, whatever the frequency, and it's not cleaned by the MBTA, that you would go ahead and clean it yourself, or maybe you would just take on that responsibility in the maintenance agreement itself. And I mean, I don't expect you to get reimbursed by the T. But Commissioner Sullivan is right, we do need to know that someone is going to be doing this work.
It is our strong assumption and something that we're going to advocate for, that the project maintain the responsibility for maintaining this over time. It's not our intention to, to put this into an MBTA maintenance agreement where they are the responsible party. So, you know, I did want to clarify just one note. We don't expect that this maintenance agreement would be between the three parties. We understand that we would have an agreement with DCR for areas where they have care and control currently, for us to be able to do operations and maintenance in their space, and then a separate agreement with MBTA in areas where they have care and control. For anything we do or improve, we would be the responsible party for maintenance in perpetuity.
Okay, okay. I mean, that makes sense. I'm always trying to figure out a way to maybe reduce agreements, but that makes sense with two different property owners. The trick there, obviously, is to make sure that the agreements are seamless, right? That there are no gaps between the two agreements. Because, I mean, theoretically, if there are any gaps in the agreements, we're going to be looking at the proponent. So, but I trust you'll have good legal counsel doing that. Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, and then the final thing is, I don't believe this has gone through review with the Water and Sewer Commission yet, who is concerned about the runoff of the road and the, the size of this, 18 by 18, and calculations of how much water it can take and pollutants, et cetera. So I just throw that out there because that may just hold up the whole project, because that will be required to be given to the Water and Sewer, who will be talking to the CONCOM, who will want to see what this agreement looks like, to make sure you have perpetual right to enter onto MBTA land, or somebody has the right to get onto MBTA land or DCI land to fulfill the obligations. That's all. It's, it's, it's a problem. We've got too many cogs in this wheel, and we, you know, who's on first? So we go ahead and say, go ahead, subject to this agreement, we'll also want to be looking at that agreement. And so, you know, we got to get that hustled up. And I don't know if you've ever dealt and done a hustle up agreement for two state agencies, but God bless you.
Well, we appreciate your best wishes there, and we are certainly amenable to start to move that forward as soon as possible and do acknowledge that we'll provide it to Boston Water and Sewer as well.
Yeah, I just throw that out there. It's just, I don't want to be a surprise to you guys. You should already know that's what we do, so. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. I see some hands up. Just want to remind members of the public. We'll go through the commissioner's comments, and then we'll open it up for public discussion. But just want to remind you to, if you do want to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. Commissioner Linay?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Could you, if you don't mind, could I impose upon you, you asked the question, and it's in the FBIM letter regarding the protection of the, of birds, migratory patterns or routes. And I know you asked that question in the first hearing, I think to the architect. Did you want to, or if you could, could you summarize that exchange?
Could I summarize that?
Yeah, if you remember.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. I think there were measures on the building itself acting as bird deterrents. Katie, is that correct?
Sure, happy to chime in. So Amy Corte Arrow Street joined us for the first hearing. What she expressed with the commission at that hearing is that bird safe design incorporates sort of two different approaches. One is to look at the glazing and the pattern of windows that you have on your building, to make sure that you're not getting large reflective zones that are uninterrupted that might look like the sky. So there's a combination of being able to use decals and other glazing treatment on the glass itself to avoid that type of reflection. And then the other piece is to break up some of the reflection in the glass by having strategically planted landscaping out there and to make sure that you're very thoughtful in both your site design as well as your glass and your building design. So they will be incorporating both of those measures in continued design review with the city as we move forward here closer to construction.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay. Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
More comments, I guess. I just want to talk a little bit about the road. I recognize that people are saying the modification is minor, and I think that's true from the aspect of travel on it. But in terms of protection of the marsh, I think it's major for me. It was the difference between supporting the project and not supporting the project. So I hear that there are more hoops for this to go through, and I just want to be clear ahead of time that coming back and saying, oh, sorry, we have to put it back where we had it before is, is, is not going to be, is not going to work for me. I think that I'm, I'm in fact disappointed, and if there are more conversations that it clearly are going to be with the MBTA, it would have been better if you had continued to keep that closer to the house, have been moved there, opening slightly and provide more room for the marsh in the, and this is now partly, and so I also want to acknowledge that it, I was supportive, assuming that the stormwater makes sense. So if the Boston Water and Sewer has, ends up having concerns about that, I certainly will as well. But I just wanted to say, because we've gotten important comments from, you know, letters, and that's the area that I think is most significant because the elevation is low. For the rest of the property, it's up considerably higher. And, you know, there's vegetation that moving the road adds vegetation between the marsh. I just think all those things are critically important. I think the fencing that we're requiring addresses a number of comments from the friends also. So I just do want to say that I, I read their letter carefully, and I've looked at whether, I think, I think we've done our best to address them if we get the project that we think we're going to get. And even more so if it could be made a little better by, by working with the T to move the road even further away at that, at that lowest end.
I just.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify, and I think I might have made a comment about a minor modification. That was in the context of getting the T's approval. Certainly, you and I went out, we walked the site. The modifications are very important, I think, to all the commissioners and advocates. But that was in the context of, would it give the T any heartburn to approve this? Because it doesn't, as we observed that day, it's not going to impede any of the workers' access into the yard or anything like that. So that, that was the context for that comment.
Agreed, thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify. Okay. Okay, with that, let's go to the public. Let me just see if I can figure out which hands, which, which hands are up first. Maybe, Elena, I'm not, for some reason, I am not getting sequenced.
I think that Cindy Baxter, yes, I believe that Cindy Baxter's handle is up first.
Great, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to start off by saying, man, is this a really complicated project. Got to get that out there. But we are extremely grateful to the commissioners, to all of the different organizations that have been working with us because we really look at this as more than a complicated or complex project. It's something as, as has been stated, as Commissioner Sullivan stated, that in a practical sense, coming from a person who has had decades of practical experience, it's almost impossible to have it come true unless you have a minor army of people overseeing. So, so we have a lot of concerns, and people have honestly put up with us. So I want to say thank you for that. And I also want to let people know we're not going away, as I'm sure none of you expected. We may choose to let people know we're not going away, as I'm sure none of you expected. Um, we may choose to pursue additional avenues and that's really based on our hope, um, that we would be able to see these 123 conditions that were spoken of as soon as possible. And I'll just pause here to see what the public right is in order to see those conditions so that we have an opportunity to react, because I do know that subsequent steps in the process do have time limitations. So, so that's my first question.
Sure. So, um, the last time we talked, I think it was, uh, Ms. Miller, um, asked that question. And I said something to the effect of it should be in the public, uh, Google filer, um, uh, filings. Um, and I was mistaken, um, because it is in the file, uh, but, uh, that part of the file apparently isn't open to the public. And what I, um, so first, um, sorry for any confusion caused by that. Um, I didn't know that there were different sections. Um, but that being said, um, the, I, I know that from, uh, the state statute and the, um, uh, legal department's perspective, that documents that you're working on with an applicant, uh, that could lead to litigation, um, are, uh, kept, um, they are kept, uh, how should I put this? They are kept between the parties until, um, they are finalized, uh, because of litigation concerns and not litigation from the public, but between the, um, uh, between the parties, between the CONCOM here and also the, um, applicant. Uh, so it's called, uh, until they're final, they're not released to the public. It's called like the iterative, um, uh, document exemption. Uh, so I'm assuming that's why, um, the order of conditions until finalized are not, um, not on our Google file.
Okay, so then if
But what I could say to you though, Cindy, is of those, let's say, and I used 123 maybe because I'm terrible with passwords and my password, password might be one,
Is one, two, three?
It's 123. Um, but, um, what I can say to you is that, um, our standard order of conditions, and Elena, uh, please correct me if I'm wrong here, are very easy, um, to access. Uh, and the final, uh, the, the special conditions that we have added to the standard order of conditions, uh, we have discussed in public, uh, and you've heard all of those deliberations. And when I call for the motion, I'll talk about them again. Um, and Elena, I think went through them earlier.
Okay, okay. Because certainly I know there's been an allusion to the fact that we did a lot of documentation. I know we had a lot of concerns. I know we identified three gaps in the NOI and today's testimony specifically provided our suggestions, um, recognizing, of course, the commission's expertise and, and respecting that. Um, but ultimately going on, i- i- is a certified auditor, okay? We've gone from trust but verified to zero trust. And of course, as a small organization, it's really critical. Um, you know, given the new climate, especially in terms of the government, we view our role as needing to increase, needing to do more monitoring. As such, in understanding the litigation concerns, um, we view our role as being even more critical now. And most importantly, in terms of monitoring and effective consequences, reporting with meaningful metrics. So for that reason, um, I'm just asking that in some fashion, we have a better or be given a better understanding of not only the standard order of conditions, but how the conditions, the suggestions and the concerns that we've raised over the past three weeks or so are being treated. So that would be my, my request.
Okay. And again, you will see those immediately after I hear. And, um, and, and I think that the, um, uh, and some of this is a dialogue between staff and in this case, there's an, we, yeah, and this is extra, actually somewhat extraordinary. And, you know, Commissioner Herbst and Sullivan, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, it's, I, I've been on the commission for probably about six years, uh, and I don't think that we've required an environmental monitor, um, prior to this. So we are actually asking for an independent, uh, set of eyes on this. Uh, and then, um, as I was talking about before, the dialogue back and forth, I mean, you know, staff and the commission know what the metrics are, um, especially Commissioner Sullivan, when it comes to stormwater, you know, whether it be expanded solids, uh, you know, 80%, 90%, uh, you know, of velocity, you know, we've got erosion controls in place. Um, so the metrics are, some of them are well known and, you know, in a project like this, some of them may be developed, um, through the experience of having the environmental monitor and having the, um, ability and actually the luxury of getting these reports and these logs and seeing how they perform. And frankly, if we see something that is, um, and staff sees something that, uh, is, uh, degrades the salt marsh area, the resource areas, then, um, clearly, um, we'll take steps to, um, halt that. Um, or, you know, the, uh, require the modifications that need, need to be done to, um, be protective.
Okay, okay. Well, uh, I know I have a whole bunch of other things. I know there are probably a lot of people who have questions. Um, but again, I, I commend the commission of, on getting a monitor. Um, object, objectivity is, is critical. And certainly if it's not something that's done often, um, again, I, I applaud, uh, we all from Friends of Belle Isle Marsh applaud the commission on, on doing this because this is certainly a, an extremely critical, um, project and extremely big risk. And it's not the last, um, piece of property that's under review by developers along Belle Isle Marsh. So we, we are concerned not only about Belle Isle Marsh, um, but any precedent that's being set by this kind of development going in. And, and again, we appreciate the action that you've taken here. Uh, so, so I'll stop there because I know I could go on forever and you'd kick me out, as you should.
Who's not kick you out? And want to applaud, uh, you and your, um, group's advocacy, uh, because it's very helpful. And, and honestly, um, we all feel the same way you do, or else we would be on this commission. Um, and you know, we, we do, you know, over the years, we've learned, you know, what tools we can use to leverage, uh, the performance standards that we need. And, you know, and I'm not saying we're perfect by any stretch of the imagination. It's, it's always an iterative process, uh, but, you know, with, um, your voice and, you know, and I will say, uh, responsible proponents, um, you know, we learn a lot at these hearings, uh, and, you know, uh, move those practices, the best practices forward to other projects. So thank you. Um, Elena, who's next? Mr. Walkie?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, good evening. Thank you. Uh, John Walkie, he's a Boston resident and, uh, Director of Climate Justice at Green Roots. And I will defer to, uh, our colleagues at Friends of Belle Isle in terms of all these details. And I'll also undercut my own comments here, uh, just to, uh, admit that I have not been involved as much as I've been following the project, but not really engaged as deeply as I've wanted to be, uh, especially going back to the actual planning process, the Article 80 process on this. Um, and just to sort of say, I, I appreciate the complexity of the project and the sort of, uh, precedent being set of having an environmental monitor, you know, being, uh, employed in this. Um, Mr. Sullivan's comments about some of the complexities around, uh, the water and the, and the comments that are in the chat from Mary Mitchell and from, uh, Emma, from, uh, from the Nature Conservancy, that all these things are, um, are a test to the, to the complexity of trying to build in this area, which makes, which sort of highlights that maybe we shouldn't be. Um, but I mean, that things are already moving forward and a lot of work has gone into the sort of, um, horseine cosmetics that are being applied at this point. I mean, the things going forward, you're doing whatever you can to the letter of the law. Everything will be done, you know, correctly. But as we pull back and look at the fate of the Belle Isle Marsh in the future, as we hem it, hem it in with as much development as we can possibly squeeze in, um, we're going, we need at some point just to be honest with ourselves as climate change is coming in, sea levels rise, the Belle Isle Marsh's fate is looking pretty grim. Um, and the rhetoric that we use both a- at the state level, the federal level and at the municipal level within planning and in the environment departments inherent at the commission, we talk a lot about climate change and nature-based solutions and all this stuff. But when the rubber hits the road and we get into these details, th- those issues and those solutions, uh, and perspectives are pretty low on the priority list, uh, in my opinion. Um, and you may disagree, uh, you're much more in the, the gears of it all as it grinds forward, but as, if you pull back and look at the coastline, um, I know these are, these are rental units. If they were to have been condos, I think by the time the 30-year mortgage is paid off, we'd be more concerned or the concerns about some of the sediment coming off the site and rainwater will probably be overshadowed by what's happening of the water coming into the site from the opposite direction. Um, so I, I, I just wanted to just go on the record to say that we really do need to take some of that stuff serious and some of that needs to happen before it gets to the Conservation Commission because you guys are doing the best you can with what's been given to you. But, uh, from the, from the perspective of what the city says is important and then what is getting permitted and, and developed, uh, there's a disconnect there that's concerning for the future. Um, I'll stop there and thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I, obviously, we all appreciate everything you do over at Green Roots. And, um, I do agree with you. I would assume that, um, statutory regimes, uh, over the next few years are going to look much different than they do now. Um, at least that's the hope, uh, at least on state and municipal levels. I'm not sure what's going on in the federal level, but, um, I don't see any other hands. Uh, Elena, did you want to go through the chat? Um, comments?
Yes, absolutely. So, um, Mary Mitchell, I'm not sure if Mary wanted to read the message, or I can also read the message aloud.
Okay.
I can go ahead and read this, so.
Yeah, we can just go ahead and read it, up the elevated road, how it's going to affect the marsh in, in.
Yes, yeah.
Katie, you can probably see that. Um, did you want to respond to that, please?
Sure. I, I believe a, a number of the comments that by both Mary and Emma are related to thinking about ways to really enhance the vegetation on either side of Austin Avenue and to use the landscaping to be a more part of the best management practices. Um, we did submit a fairly comprehensive landscape plan that included a detailed seed mix of native plantings. We do not anticipate, I know there was a note here that said it looked like it was maybe grass and trees. Um, it is not. It's a very diverse seed mix of coastally appropriate plants, uh, to really enhance the upland. Uh, and we agree with Emma that, uh, the opportunity by mixing up the species in that space is to create an opportunity where the vegetated strip also addresses runoff and is able to help to enhance that upland space. So hopefully that, that's helpful and, uh, our plan is, uh, filed, uh, along with our application.
Okay, thank you. Um, Elena, okay, Emma, re- you raise your hand, I guess, uh, if you want to unmute yourself, floor is yours.
Hi, I just have a really brief comment. My name is Emma Gildes Game. I'm the Climate Adaptation Scientist with the Nature Conservancy. And so I want to echo, uh, the words of our partners over at Friends of Belle Isle Marsh and, uh, at Green Roots, um, and want to point out that the conversation about vegetation and about bringing in plants and also the underlying hydrology and soil types and things that you need to really have, uh, actually functional, uh, plant ecosystem, um, is, can be done in ways that not only protect, uh, the marsh from runoff, but also need to be thought about from the context of flooding into the site. I mean, we are, as John Walkie of Green Roots mentioned, we are really entering a time where we're seeing accelerating rates of sea level rise and to ensure that property that, you know, is very, very close to the water, which is rising, um, remains safe into the future for the life of the project, uh, really thinking about all of the different ways to mitigate water coming onto the pro- uh, pro- property and doing that with nature to the extent possible is going to be really important. Um, I mean, to elevate, uh, my internet kicked me off in the middle of John's comments, but to really elevate the idea of, uh, this particular venue is a little bit too late to be thinking about how much more we should really be building in, uh, the, the coastal margin, but, um, recognizing that flooding is only going to continue to get worse and that, um, everything possible needs to be done at this point to make sure that we're not putting people at risk of, um, storm surge flooding, uh, in, you know, this year and into 50 years from now.
Great. Thank you, Emma.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Richmond. Can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Um, during the last hearing, um, I raised the issue that, um, the woman from the, from TNC just raised about flooding. And I, I think that the answer was that, that they didn't expect any. So now I'm wanting to see if there was, have a response to what was just said.
Sure. Um, so, uh, in regards to your comment at the, uh, previous hearing, um, the response, if I recall correctly, was related to whether or not the portions of the built environment, uh, that are inland of the Austin Avenue roadway were anticipated to, uh, experience any tidal flooding or inundation from coastal flooding into the built space. Uh, and the answer to that is, uh, and was still that, uh, the building is elevated per the city's climate policy, uh, under 25A, um, and that the egress and, uh, entrance to this building is as well. Uh, in regards to, uh, the comment, uh, that the woman from the Nature Conservancy just raised, which is more, I, I believe about the idea of being able to absorb water in and around Austin Avenue and in and around built spaces through landscape. You know, we gr- agree wholeheartedly and we are working with a great partner in Copley Wolf, uh, who is being very thoughtful about that and about the selection of vegetation and how it complements it. So I, I, I'm hoping that clarifies it a bit. Um, we are acknowledging again that the built spaces are built to the coastal resiliency policy and that the remainder of the site, uh, is, uh, vegetated and treated appropriately.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Gail Miller has raised her hand. Gail, you can unmute yourself. Gail, you're still unmuted. There we go.
Okay. Um, yeah, thanks, thanks very much. Um, of course, I'm with Friends of Belle Isle and have been for a million years. So this place is really dear to my heart. Um, but I'd like to say with regard to the flooding, I mean, I think we mentioned it before, but, um, what's told for flooding in that area have projected that there will be flooding, maybe not at the height of Bennington Street Accord, but that area will be flooded by 2077. So I think, you know, the years certainly tumble along very quickly in my life and that comes around pretty quick. Um, so I, I mean, I, I don't know how we can say it's not ever going to flood. Um, those projections are out there and, and every time you turn on the TV, you can see the new projections of people are floating. So I, I don't know. I don't know what to say. I just think it's foolhardy to build a floodplain, period. So, thank you. I've made enough comments along the way. So thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Okay, um, Elena, do you see, and I don't see anyone else? Okay. Okay, thank you to everyone. Thank you for the comments. Um, very thoughtful. And again, uh, as we've been saying all along, um, uh, made for a much better project. Um, and thank you to my fellow commissioners. This was, uh, one where to put in a lot of time, a lot of thought, uh, to get to where we are right now. Um, so with that, our entertaining motion to, uh, close the hearing and issue the order of conditions with the special conditions that we have read into the record this evening. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that carries, we have five of us tonight, five to nothing. Okay. Uh, thank you very much. And, um, I would be remiss, uh, to the Red Gate team. I was sorry to hear of, um, Greg Byalecki. Um, I know he's an important member of your team. Um, I didn't know him very well, but, uh, the little I knew of him, he was very unassuming and very generous with his time, uh, and, uh, was a great public servant in the, uh, Patrick administration. So, uh, sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, okay. So with that, uh, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for an unassigned DEP file number, um, from AECOM on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for the proposed contaminated soil excavation, capping and remediation within the central, southern and eastern portions of Gallup Island and Boston Harbor. Uh, resource areas are coastal beach, coastal dune, barrier beach, coastal Uh, resource areas are coastal beach, coastal dune, barrier beach, coastal bank, one hundred foot buffer to coastal bank, land subject to coastal storm flowage and twenty-five foot waterfront area. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Hi, I'm Michael Stoller with AECOM, professional engineer and licensed site professional.
Okay.
We also have Tom Keough from uh, AECOM as well.
Great. Okay, floor is all yours.
All right. Okay, thank you. Yep, we see the slides up there. Uh, so where is Gallup's Island? It's out in Boston Harbor. It's twenty-seven acres located near Georges and Lovell's Island. Next slide, please. So what is Gallup's Island? So the top photograph in, in here is from the nineteen forties. It's got a long history of use dating all the way back to Native Americans. Um, military uses, Civil War, World War One, World War Two. Uh, the buildings that you see there in the nineteen forties were demolished soon after World War Two. Um, what happened was the, a lot of those buildings had asbestos uh, siding shingles on them when the demolition occurred. Um, there was a big fire also reported around that time uh, by the, probably by the demolition contractor, but a lot of those shingles stayed in place. So they were still present around the building footprints, which as you can see in that photo occupies much of the island's footprint. Uh, over time, the island has grown in. That's the bottom photograph, current conditions. Um, but a lot of those asbestos singles are still near the surface, but intermixed with superficial soils throughout a big footprint of the island. So the island was co- closed to the public um, back in two thousand and one. Um, and we've uh, looking at it and trying to convict, come up with remedial solutions and try to get it back open to the public. We believe we, we are there. We've had lengthy conversations with various groups within DEP, asbestos group, waste site cleanup group, uh, as well as the wetlands and resource group. Uh, the bottom photo on the right is an area we call Peggy's Point. You'll see in the very bottom right of that photo, uh, it's a very low lying area. We'll be talking about Peggy's Point more in a minute. The other focus area uh, where we're going to be in jurisdictional areas working, propose to do work to clean this island up uh, is in the kind of the central left. You can see the pier there. Just to the left of the pier, as you just start getting into the upland uh, areas above uh, mean high water is where we're also going to be doing work. We call that the structural waste remains area, SWRA. That has not only asbestos, but also much deeper contamination with lead, uh, coal ash, wood ash, hydrocarbons uh, and some other things. So um, can bear that in mind as we go into the next slides here. Thank you. So this is an overview of the island. As I mentioned, on the, on the right is Peggy's Point, that low lying area. Um, vulnerable to uh, surges, uh, the nor- northeast winds really hammer that side of the island. Uh, we do get some overwash. There is asbestos deposits out there in the surface. So we're proposing to uh, scrape those up uh, and then consolidate those within the upland portion of the island. And that's what we're doing in a lot of the upland areas. Uh, it's for a number of reasons prohibitive to scrape all of this asbestos off and take it to a landfill. So what we're doing is trying to cap it in place and to minimize that cap, we're consolidating it in an upland area protected from erosion, um, and then put a, a clean soil cap on it. The structural waste remains areas in the bottom there shown near the pier. Uh, that area, because the deposits are much deeper, um, it's not really feasible without having a, a much more significant disturbance footprint to within the resource areas to uh, excavate all of that out. So we're proposing to cap that in place. Um, and as you mentioned, um, we are above mean high water, but there are a number of different resource areas uh, that will be impacting in, in these two focus areas. Peggy's Point to the east on the right and then the SWRA uh, in the bottom. Next slide, please. So this is a remediation project. I am the LSP of record. Uh, we're doing it under the Massachusetts contingency plan. So it, it is uh, limited remediation and restoration. We're not building anything. We're not constructing anything. We're really just trying to get the asbestos uh, out of the environment to the extent we can, protect it underneath caps so it's not subject to further erosion and further spreading and storm events. Uh, and then also to protect uh, uh, human um, contact with these materials in the future. Ideally to uh, once we're done with the project, ideally to reopen the island to the public. A part of the restoration, you can see here in Peggy's Point, we're going to be excavating uh, some areas where there's superficial deposits of asbestos. Uh, the existing conditions vary. Where the uh, arrow is in the middle, that's a vegetated kind of a sumac area. Uh, as you get out to the northwest and the e-northeast corners of this excavation, uh, transitions into um, cobble dune, gravel, uh, gravel beach. And so we're going to scrape this up. Um, we can't just extract the asbestos. We've got to take the surrounding soils with it. So we're making sure we're getting all the asbestos fibers, et cetera. Uh, but then we'll restore in kind. So where there's existing vegetation, we're going to put back vegetation. Where there's gravel beach, we'll put back similar gravel beach. We're trying to just mimic exactly what's there today. Um, and again, we're, we're scraping everything up off of Peggy's Point. So this will be clean. Some deposits are superficial. Uh, it's viable and feasible to do that. Um, and it's also got a limited depth of excavation, limited footprint. So next slide, please. We'll go to the SWRA. So this is the, the southern central portion of the island. The pier is uh, just below this. The jetty um, is also just to the bottom here. Um, this is an area where we're capping it in place. To cap it in place, we've got to match and meet existing surrounding grade. So we do have to do some excavation to, to blend that proposed three foot thick soil cap in. Um, and we'll, but we're consolidating those materials up in the top arrow, which is above um, not only above isolated, um, no, above land subject to coastal storm flowage, but it's also above um, the um, climate resiliency, uh, sea level rise uh, modeling that we did to really get it up and out of that area for the consolidation. The cap will be within land subject to coastal storm flowage. Again, the deposits go down and actually we can see it on the next slide. Um, this is a cross section profile. The vertical is exaggerated versus the horizontal scale. So it's not quite that steep. Uh, but this shows your cross section of the proposed cap. We're going to blend it on the right near the jetty. Consolidated up uh, in the upland area on the left. And then that cap um, felt that, that zone. There is a coastal dune there uh, that's been accreting over the past ten, fifteen years. We've, we've got observances of that. Uh, so we're trying to work with that. Um, and then again, similarly here, where there's vegetation, we'll be putting back vegetation. Where the footprint is gravel beach, we'll be putting back gravel beach, really trying to mimic what's there um, and uh, and restore it essentially in kind. Um, next slide, please. So I think here the rest of the, the presentation is just some photo examples of, of the island. So this is an example of uh, this is actually out in Peggy's Point in the vegetation area. You can see the shingles there uh, intermixed with the soils. That's generally what it looks like there. Very similar to what we see in, in the upland areas. The SWRA is a little different because we've got lead contamination, some petroleum hydrocarbons. Uh, also why we're consolidating that and, and capping that in place. Next slide. Uh, this is Peggy's Point, looking up into the island from the eastern tip. Uh, most of the work proposed is in that far top left of the photo in the vegetation. There's some into that uh, gravel beach. Um, but you give, this should give you a sense of the relief of the island as well. Uh, next slide. This next uh, photo is looking also from the eastern tip back into the island. Uh, this is the south side of Peggy's Point. Off to the right is this uh, sumac vegetation that will be uh, will have to get in, in, in work through to get uh, be able to scrape off that uh, asbestos shingles and siding in there. And then again, restore that in kind. Next slide, please. So this is the SWRA looking um, south. This is the jetty. Off to your left, the top, you can't see it, but that's where the pier is. Um, this is where we're going to propose to cap. This is remnants of a, a rail that they used to offload ships from. Um, there is uh, contamination in this beach area, this coastal beach, gravel beach. Uh, so we'll be capping this in place. Um, and then again, mimicking it uh, to the extent we can. Uh, next slide, please. And then this is looking at just same view, just in the exact opposite direction. Um, so this is the jetty on your left. The pier is behind you to the right. Um, and then capping this in place, there's some vegetation. We're also going to be removing and then capping and then again, restoring vegetation with vegetation. Uh, beach, gravel beach with gravel beach, similar footprints is the proposal. Uh, next slide, please. And I think that's actually it. So that's just an overview. I'll leave, you can leave that up if you want while I answer questions. I tried to keep that very brief. I know we're, you know, try to keep it to five minutes, so try to be cognizant of everybody's time.
Okay, thank you. So a couple of quick questions. Um, uh, first question is the um, uh, ACM materials. Well, well, let me, let me step back. Um, you're going to be creating two areas uh, that will be capped. So most uh, most of the ACM will be excavated from where it is now, brought over to these two areas and cap there. Is that correct?
The vast majority of it will be brought to the upland area, which is kind of the top middle. It's in the high, almost the highest point of the island in the middle.
Okay.
That's where the vast majority will be brought. The cap area in the SWRA, there's some consolidation there. It's mainly just scraping up uh, the periphery of that to make it a kind of a smaller um, footprint, um, that the periphery of it, the deposits aren't as thick with that lead and, and petroleum contamination. So where it's only a foot or three thick, we can consolidate that and have a, a smaller cap footprint in the final condition. But the, the vast majority of the asbestos uh, consolidation is going to be in the upland portion of the island.
Okay, so if you know, um, how, how are the ACM materials going to be stabilized? Are they going to be uh, mixed with any like solidifier or something like that, then buried, then capped? And what is the cap? Is it a, a, a concrete cap, geotextile uh, with clean fill over it? And I might have materials I missed it if it is.
Yep, no, what we're trying to do is work with nature and work with what we have on the island. Um, it's a, it's a glacial till underneath where the asbestos is. And again, the asbestos is only a foot in some areas, maybe three feet impacted. Below that, it's clean, natural, glacial till. So what we're going to do is excavate a hole um, to put the asbestos in and the materials that we excavate from that hole will then create the cap. So we're trying to reuse clean soil from the island as that cap, which also has some benefits of, you know, erosion, et cetera. It's just keeping it, you know, not introducing non-native materials to, to work with what's there. The asbestos doesn't migrate. Um, it's not like other contaminants like petroleum or it, it's a, it's a solid. Um, so we're just trying to uh, eliminate direct contact and eliminate it from blowing around in the environment where then it becomes frayed and then becomes friable and then breaks down into fibers and then it becomes problematic. The shingles themselves aren't really all that friable, uh, but they're now intermixed with the soil. And again, because they're intermixed, the, the, the approach is to keep them wet. Just like you doing an abatement of this material, if it was still on the building, keep it wet. Um, transport it um, while wet, deposit it in the, the pit or the, the deposit area consolidation area wet. Um, and then uh, cover it over with, with the soil. We will be using a geotextile in the upland consolidation area. Uh, more is just a marker layer. Uh, if there is erosion or if anybody's digging in that area in the future, they know when they're getting into the contamination. Um, in the SWRA, uh, we got some comments through the MIPA process where use of a geotextile, a, a, a manmade material within land subject to coastal storm flowage. The cap, the, the soil cap above that disappears for whatever reason. Um, that could get exposed, that could become a, a, you know, manmade material that then becomes trash or debris into the ocean. Um, so what we did there, instead of using that geotextile, which is typically part of these caps, as we use, we're, they're proposing to use riprap stone. Um, so again, it creates that visual that if somebody's digging or there's a big erosion event, the riprap will get exposed and then people will know, hey, just below that is where we have contamination and we need to restore it. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, it did. That, that was really helpful, but um, I would assume there'll be an activity and use limitation. Um, and so there really should be no one excavating. Um.
No, well, activity and use limitations are just notices. They're just to tell you that there's contamination there. And there's, there are, they do have requirements that you maintain the cap. There's an annual inspections that will go with this as part of the AUL. But if somebody, you know, if DCR decides in the future, hey, we want to put in a new sign, we want to put in a new um, a bird feeding nest and eagle's nest and we need to dig a hole three or four feet deep, we're not going to prohibit them from doing that. It just needs to be done with it, with a, in a proper way, with a soil management plan, a health and safety plan and under the appropriate protocols, which again, is all part of that AUL notice, you know, restriction requirement.
Yep, good, okay. Um, okay, a couple prac- uh, practical questions here, I guess, as to the um, uh, construction period or the remediation period. Um, the um, uh, trucks and things like that. How um, are we going to prevent those from wandering off path and only being in the areas that they need to be in?
Yeah, the, 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 we've had a lot of success and DCR has been maintaining this through uh, front bow dropping um, boats, basically you drop the front, uh, like Hinckley boats. Um, and the, the, the equipment, tracked equipment uh, drives off that southern beach. Um, is very gravelly. Um, we haven't had a lot of issues in the past with rutting of equipment. Um, so it'll drive off there. Um, we don't expect to need or, or are proposing to use uh, barges. Um, the way we've configured this, the size of the equipment, the size of the, the volumes of excavated materials. Um, it just doesn't lend itself or need, need for that. Again, keeping it all on island also limits the number of, you know, trucks and transport and barges. No need for barges. Um, but we've got a very specific area. It's not just environmentally sensitive. There's also cultural resources out there that we're uh, we're working with Mass Historic Commission. We've got a very specific area where that's going to happen. We've got specific plans in where the contractor can access. Um, and we've got, uh, because this is a remediation project and an asbestos project, we will have, you know, a lot of uh, monitors, uh, field engineers, if you want to call them that, or LSP representatives out there carefully monitoring and, and, and watching all of this work.
Yep, understood. Okay, so um, we'll definitely be adding a special condition uh, that when the AUL gets finalized, that it gets submitted to staff with all the attachments like the um, construction protocols, the SMP plan uh, and, and all of that. Um, okay, good. Oh.
And, and in that regard, uh, because, because this is a remediation project and to do this work, we also have a soil management plan. We've got a health and safety plan. All of that is part of the MCP Phase Four Remedy Implementation Plan that was already been filed with the state DEP. And we've had a, a lot of conversations with DEP already uh, about a lot of these very topics and issues and they're all part of that Phase Four Plan, which is not yet final. It's in, it's on the DEP's website, but after this meeting, after these, this process, after your pool, if any changes to that will be incorporated and we'll finalize that before. Um, this gets implemented in the contractor. That will be the primary component to the contractor's uh, contract as well to comply with all of those requirements.
Okay, you, you're talking my language here. I could talk to you about this all night. But um, last question is the stockpiles and management of the stockpiles. Uh, we're going to be having erosion controls around the stockpiles for any stormwater runoff and um, the um, making sure that uh, if the tarps or the other protective measures uh, tear uh, that they are inspected and replaced. Um, how, how long is the construction anyway? How long do you expect to stock? I know stock, stockpiles can stay up to like three months or even longer depending on their characteristics. So, um, what's the plan there?
Um, yeah, it, it'll depend a little bit on the, the, the resourcing of the contractor. Um, we do expect that during the winter months, that, that we may need to just shut down uh, because of icing. You can't keep asbestos wet if it turns, if the water's turning to ice. Also icing of the harbor may be problematic for crews getting back and forth. Um, I'd like, you know, if we get an early start, it may be one construction season, March to November. Depending on his resourcing and how things go with. Um, depending on his resourcing and how things go. With regards to stockpiling. Um, we will not be stockpiling asbestos soils.
Okay.
That's not, it's not the way it's laid out. It's not the way it's going to happen. We will be stockpiling inherently. We're, like I said, we're going to create this consolidation area. That's one of the first things we're going to do. We will need to scrape some of the asbestos off of that specific location to create that clean pit. To put, then put all the asbestos in. So there will be some stockpiling or, or mounding of that asbestos soils in that area immediately. After that, all the, everything gets dumped right in the hole, covered, you know, probably daily. Um, there will be clean excavated materials stockpiled for the cap that will go on later. That stockpile will stay in place for months, many months, until we can finally cap it back in place. Um, and we'll be working with a contractor to look at, you know, is it just going to be, uh, you know, a tarp or something along those lines? Again, it's going to be clean soil, but it's still silt and, and non-organic that can bowl around and create problems for um, vegetated areas, get into the harbor or whatnot. We also recognize this is a very windy site. Um, so that'll be something we'll be looking at the contractors to probably not just plastic and tarp. It may be we're going to create this clean stockpile. It's going to be future cap. Can we put some type of growth, some type of dirt glue, some type of, um. Hydro mulch or something along those lines to stabilize it, so. Um, yeah, I've, I've been living tarping for three decades and I don't like it. The contractors, they don't, they don't like it either because they're always maintaining it. This island's going to be windy and it's going to be even that much more difficult. So I, I don't have the exact answer for you. It'll probably be a combination of best practices as to exactly how that's managed. But that's.
Okay. Okay, when you figure it out, we're definitely going to want to have that in the file as well. Um, so, okay, good, thank you. Um, what do you have on this?
Uh, yes, so just a few sort of housekeeping notes. Um, there isn't a DEP file number for this project quite yet, so. Um, just to take that into account. And um, we did conduct a site visit on August twenty eighth of this year, so um, we've been out to the site and we'll work with um, the proponent team to finalize conditions. But um, given the fact that DP hadn't issued a file number yet, uh, we figured that the commission might want to hold off on closing the hearing.
Uh, yeah, no, that's a very safe assumption. Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, before I go to commissioners, just want to remind members of the public, if you want to provide public. I'm sorry, if you want to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to meet yourself. Or send your questions to staff at email at CC um, at boston.gov. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan, what do you have?
Yeah, when you began the presentation, you said one of the corners of the island had uh, a lot of wave action or, you know, difficult. Was that the SWRA end or was that the other end?
No, the eastern end is Peggy's Point. It's low lying. I think the surface elevation, the top elevation in Peggy's Point is only a few feet above. Um, it's all within land subject to coastal storm flowage and you get the nor- nor'easter storms, the northeast winds really push the waves up. Um, and sometimes over that Peggy's Point area through that sumac. The SWRA on the central southern portion of the island is actually an accretion area. Um. We, we see dune sand growing over time. Uh, certainly dependent on the wind direction, the wave direction, the storm direction, you do get some wave energy going in there. Uh, but it's not nearly uh, as severe as what we see over at Peggy's.
And, and when you, when you, you've got to scrape down at Peggy's and, and put the bad stuff up in the upland. You put down, how do you keep that stuff consolidated enough that wave action in any given storm doesn't move it? I mean, right now it's pretty tough stuff. It's been sitting there, beaten up and it's compacted very well. How, how do you compact that stuff when you backfill a hole? And so that the next storm doesn't erode it?
Um, yeah, I mean, we'll be mimicking, um. Aggregate type materials, um, beach stone, gravel beach, um. The, there will be a challenge. We recognize that, um, and Peggy's restoring that vegetation. Uh, and yeah, we'll, we'll watch the forecast. We'll try to time it with uh, season. Um, and that's also going to be part of working with the contractor. Right out of the gate, we'll, we'll be looking for them to give us a schedule. Depending on when contractor, what happens, what time of the year it is, what his sequence and schedule is to to try to be as smart as we can uh, collectively about this to, to minimize those risks. There's no way to eliminate them.
Right, and then, and that backfill material, that's not coming from where you dig the whole uplands, is it? Or where, where does that come from?
No, one of the biggest challenges um, for this project is actually getting new topsoil. Um, to replace topsoil. And that's, that's not necessarily the, the, there is some of that organics to provide that growth out at Peggy's. But a lot of the upland areas. Um, there is some new aggregate that we'll need to put back in to around Peggy's, especially the gravel beach. Um, we've taken some civil analysis of what's there now. And yeah, that'll, that'll likely be sourced uh, off island. We've got a requirement in there that anything comes to the island needs to be tested clean.
Yep, and then finally, what is the estimated cost of something like this?
Uh, in the neighborhood of seven or eight million dollars.
Oh, okay. I mean, plain and dirt, I was just curious how much money that's.
Yeah, and actually, uh, it would be vastly more expensive if we had to take this off island. And that is part of the reason why we're consolidating, but it's only one part of the reason. One of the biggest costs of that seven or eight million is actually the cost of topsoil to come to the island to restore it.
Right, right, that's all I had.
Yep, Commissioner Sullivan, I mean, barely the cost of a small BWSC project.
Oh, just the change order, come on.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, Commissioner Laney.
So I have a few questions related to um, vegetation. So in the areas where the excavation is occurring, if there, um. What I can understand, there may be some areas of woody vegetation and so is that in those contaminated zones? Is that just being added into, um, added with the contaminated soils to be capped or is that being um, removed from the site?
Yeah, unfortunately, we, we can't, um, again, topsoil is the biggest cost driver and, and biggest problem with trying to restore the island. Um, unfortunately, we can't reuse any of the existing topsoil because it's intermixed with the asbestos. So that also includes stumps and roots. We can't, you know, I, I, I would have loved to try to recycle that and mulch it and create some new loam. But we can't do that because of the potential for asbestos. Anything that gets cleared, not rubbed, but just the clearing, anything like above six inches off the ground. We do have a provision in there for the contractor to grind that up and reuse it as mulch and create some type of either topsoil or you know, erosion control. Um, but yeah, unfortunately, it's a lot of that root matter, stump matter will just get lost. And buried, it just gets.
That's getting buried, okay, gotcha. Just wanted to understand that. Um, and then you, I think you said you were, did you say you were replacing vegetation or is that not part of the project?
Yeah, yeah, and any, and we, I'm focusing tonight, you know, really on the, the jurisdictional areas, you know, um, but yeah, the, the the island's twenty seven acres. I think we're disturbing sixteen acres of it, um, or thereabouts. Uh, the majority of that will need to be revegetated. You know, re, 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 re-loamed, revegetated, replanted. We've got a couple of landscape architects. We worked with DCR on this project and then learned from other projects we've done around the harbor trying to restore similar conditions. So we've kind of learned from that and, and found what plants are drought tolerant, salt tolerant, wind tolerant. Um, and proposing to use a lot of those to, to make this as successful as we can. It is a tough environment. It is windy and it's, you know. I'd love to say we'll be planted once and everything will grow great. I'm a realist and I know that's going to take some time and there'll be some species that thrive and, and others that may not, again, depending on seasonal cycle that we get. Past two months, we've had a drought. If we had planted two months ago, some species would have done better than others. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's great. Um, and then I think just I think I just want to understand a little more about the, the topsoil that's being used for the, the cap itself. That's being scraped from another area of the island, is that right?
Yeah, so the, the, the lower cap is uh, three feet thick. The upper cap in the upland area doesn't need to be as thick because it's not subject to the same erosion. Um, but that is, uh, I believe eighteen or uh, twenty-four inches thick. Uh, so it'll have six inches of topsoil for planting. The other eighteen inches will be the natural glacial till that's, that's out there today.
Gotcha, okay.
And that, and that, again, that six inches of topsoil will be sourced, it needs to be sourced off island. We've got provisions in the specifications for it to be obviously clean of contaminants, but then also specific for trying to maximize the benefit, you know, trying to get as much growth as we potentially can for the vegetation.
Great, that's helpful, thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions. I just want to uh, wish the project good luck. I think it's really an important one and I'm glad they're doing it.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Herbst?
Yeah, thank you for this. It was, it was quite a project to read about and try and grasp. Um, for the lower area where you're doing the three-foot cap and you were saying sort of bring everything back to how it was, but you're kind of changing. Given how close it is to the water. Are you going to have to sort of take into account that it's not at the elevation it was before and?
Correct, yes, the, the, there's we're trying to match it at the periphery because we obviously have to match grades with the periphery. Um, but yeah, the, the, a good probably the majority of that surface or that footprint, the grade will increase two to three feet.
So you're coming out of beach and dune, I think, or, or, or not so much?
Yeah, we're trying to match the, 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 that existing dune that's not contaminated, um, and then kind of blend it in from there at a four to one slope or less. Uh, or one to four slope, as gentle as we can. But yeah, it, we are, we are not able to just match the existing grade throughout because it would have just created too much uh, material to further consolidate. It would have been with a, a larger mound of material. So the grade will change a little bit, um, in those areas, um. But we're still trying to match it the best we can and the, the, um. We're still meeting grades for future public access for universal accessibility too. So we're not lifting it so much that we can't accommodate those other missions of the project in the future.
Got it. Well, I think this is one where I imagine my fellow commissioners will be really interested to hear how this goes and what works well and what doesn't and all that. Uh, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, Elena, I don't see any hands up to you.
I do not see any hands either.
Okay, uh, nothing in the chat. So with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue, oh. Never mind, you don't have a DEP file number. Um, so we will see you or someone back uh, in our next hearing and hopefully you'll have a file number by then. So I will amend that to said, uh, entertain a motion to continue the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Laney.
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond.
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst.
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is a notice of intent for DEP file number zero, zero, six, two, one, two. From VHB on behalf of the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority for the proposed installation of a new signal system. Signal house, heat switches, replacement and rehabilitation of track work and communication system. Updates located in the existing um, right-of-way at seven hundred Atlantic Avenue. Uh, downtown uh, neighborhood of Boston. Uh, the uh, resource area is one hundred foot buffer to coastal bank. Um, I'll note Commissioner Sullivan, you, uh, I'm sure you remember this project. Um, we had it uh, slightly over three years ago. Uh, you got a lot of comments about drainage. I remember that we were, um, I think we resolved with the proponent, um. And I think this is back in front of us because, um, uh, it was, um. Uh, not timely for an extension, so this is, and we could talk about this, but my understanding is this is the same work that we permitted, um, uh, slightly over three years ago. Um, so I will look for the proponent to uh, give us an explanation here.
Hi everyone, my name is Jeremy Fontaine of MBT Environmental. I'm here with, as you mentioned, two members from VHB. That is correct for, uh, you have seen this project before. We just missed the date for extension. Um, but so we were planning on doing so, but I'm going to pass this to presentation, uh, to Holly, um, Palmgren from VHB.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, um, Holly Palmgren, VHB. Um, yeah, and as, as you confirmed, you saw this project uh, a few years ago. Um, it's very uh, much the exact same project, um, but we, we do have some slides, um, if we can pull them up. Yep, there we go. That's just the intro slide. You can change to the next one. Um, um, so if you go to the next slide, it has um, the project limits. Um, which are highlighted in red here, um, which is right near South Station, um, and, um. That's, that's it for the project limits. Um, it's not super exciting. It's all railroad, as you can see from this aerial, which maybe remember when we get to some of the discussions. Um, it is all existing railroad right-of-way. Um, so the work is all within, um, you know, existing railroad infrastructure. Um, you can go to the next slide. So, um, as you mentioned, um, work is, um, within the hundred foot buffer to coastal bank. Um, part of the work, um, there is of, obviously other work that is outside the buffer zone. Um, itself, um, but we um, have erosion controls. So when I get to the plans, I'll show you that, you know, we have those throughout the project. Um, and uh, we're replacing some existing infrastructure, um, which is um, signal and control houses, the signal system, the track switches, the communication system upgrades. And then we're doing some replacement and rehab of the track itself. Um, and some of the project may be rebalanced it once this work happens so that we can um, make sure that, you know, the, the, the track infrastructure itself is, um, is safer train passage. Um, if you go to the next slide, we sort of have an update since you did see this project before. Um, yeah, we're considering the project based on, um, what we presented, um, to be about fifteen to twenty percent complete. So we've done the inspection of the existing infrastructure. We've done some test pitting throughout the area. And we've done video inspection of the existing drainage system. Um, and then we are, we were currently, um, the order, um, just for the commission's, um, information did expire November fourth. Um, so just a few weeks, um, a few weeks ago, so we did stop work within jurisdiction. Um, uh, to, you know, come before you and, and get a valid order of conditions issued. Um, so current, um, on, ongoing work that stopped for now, but would be the next phase of work is working on the signal duct banks, um, replacement of turnouts and switches. Um, and work on the track structure itself. And looking at our current schedule, we would expect that work, all of the work would be completed by May of twenty twenty-seven. Um, so, uh, you know, two and a half years or so from now. Um, and then the next um, four slides have the actual um, project work. Um, and the, if you want to go to the next one, I can show you um, where the buffer zone is and the work that's within the buffer zone and where the erosion controls are. Okay, so, um, so you can see here, the hundred foot buffer zone is in that sort of teal color. The erosion controls are shown in, in what is considered, um, sort of, I guess, a burnt orangish color. Um, so the erosion controls are actually already in place. Um, we did do, um, a field visit with Elena a few weeks ago, um, in preparation for this. Um, so she did get it to go out there and see in the site. And since the work under the prior order had already started. All of the erosion controls were put in as part of that, um, project. So the erosion controls shown on this plan are the ones that were proposed before. And they are actually already in place out in the fields. Um, so this is sort of the end of the site, um, and shows the buffer zone. If you go to the next slide, it will show the resource, um, which is the four-point channel there. And you'll see the buffer zone, um, that comes, you know, across our work. Um, and the erosion controls that are, um, along the project limits as well. Um, the next two slides, there's actually no buffer zone in the work in those areas, but we do have erosion controls shown um, on the plan. And again, those were the same ones that were approved by the commission, um, in the last filing. So those two go all the way up, um, into the station track. Um, so open for any questions and comments. I have a coworker here who's one of the designers, so if you have any questions about the work itself. so if you have any questions about the work itself, um, we'll be happy to answer that.
Okay, thank you. So just to clarify, no new, uh, work?
No new work is proposed, um, the work scope is exactly the same as what you saw in the previous filing.
Okay, before we get going, I just want to remind members of the public, if you would like to, um, uh, provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform, if you're calling and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand, uh, by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself, um, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Um, okay, I don't really have any questions, as I said, I know the Commissioner Sullivan, uh, had extended dialogue, uh, when this first came in front of us, so Elena, I go to you first, uh, see if you have anything here.
Uh, um, excuse me, I just wanted to note that, um, I've worked with Holly and the rest of the team to make sure that, um, the conditions are similar to the ones, uh, which were issued in the original order of conditions, and that also includes a few, uh, additional conditions, which, uh, I believe Commissioner Sullivan probably asked to include, which are now included also at the, the bottom of the set. So those draft conditions are in the commission's folder and available for review. Um, just to confirm, the draft cond- or the, excuse me, the conditions which we added, which were special conditions from the last order are eighty-six, eighty-seven, and eighty-eight, so the last three conditions in the order.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, so it was been, it's been several years since you guys investigated, I think we were looking at both tide gates and, and, uh, you know, oil or grease controls, et cetera. And I know that you've been back and forth with our staff, and I believe they were satisfied with what you eventually did, I think we were supposed to go out there, we couldn't get our training right or whatever. Do you recall that? Is that how we wound up with it, that you gave us a satisfactory report of everything was working?
So we, yeah, we have provided, um, the, on the information that we had so far, which is relative to the, uh, video inspection. Uh, based on that video inspection, we had the inspection of the tide gate as well, it was on the, uh, fourth page, kind of, uh, closer to where the station's located. Um, as a result of that, what we've, uh, done is, um, we've added the installation of, uh, tide gates to the outfall, um, into that, um, combined sewer, that, that kind of bisects the, um, the MBK right-of-way.
Right.
So we'll be putting in an, an eighteen-inch, um, uh, tide gate in line, um, as well as replacing the, um, existing thirty-six, which actually has to do really more with the drainage on the, uh, cell station terminal side of the, uh, interceptor, as it were, but, uh, we're, uh, planning to install both of those as part of, uh, this project. Um, if that's gonna probably, it's looking towards, uh, probably springtime twenty twenty-five, when that installation actually occurs, but, um, yeah, I, I believe that, um, Peter and Jean-Luc were involved with all of the, um, review and approval, um, which is kind of associated with the, with, with the, um, the tide gate products and things that we were.
Right. And then this, so the only thing I would ask, uh, Elena, is that we could require them to give us an, after they get through installing these new tide gates, to give us an as-built location of where they are. Because I know in ten years, there's gonna be some poor soul struggling to figure out where all this stuff is. Because we'll all move on somewhere. So it's easy for them to do, they put in the new stuff, market where it is, give it to us, that's all.
We can include that as a condition.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Laney?
I don't have any comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I, I just have, uh, one question, I'm just curious, uh, why wasn't the request made time for an extension since the project is sounding to be pretty much the same thing?
It was an oversight on when it expired, we, uh, by the time we looked at it, it had already passed the thirty days, so we couldn't um, when, when, when we looked at it, I, we did submit a request for extension, it just came in after the thirty-day requirement, so Elena requested, um, us to file a full nu- new NOI.
Okay, got it, thank you very much, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
No questions.
Okay. Okay, I don't see any raised hands, uh, Elena, any emails?
Uh, no, no emails, and I don't see any raised hands either.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing, and I think we do have to add a, um, condition regarding the, uh, as-built plans for the, um, uh, was it the tide gates, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah.
Yep. So that would be the motion.
Some, some.
Oh. Since he was talking, I thought maybe he'd make the motion, but, okay.
It's not January, we do that in January.
I understand, okay, give a second.
Uh, yes, second.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you all.
Good luck. Uh, next item is notice of intent for DEP file number zero, zero, six, two, one, two, zero, one, four, and Boston file number twenty twenty-four dash zero, three, four, from Time Bond Inc. on behalf of EverSource Energy to conduct two soil, soil borings, ten test pits, and seventeen test trenches along the Alfred Street right-of-way uh, in my favorite neighborhood of Charlestown, Massachusetts, uh, resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Who's here on behalf of, uh, EverSource?
Uh, that would be me, Patrick Felion, I'm a environmental specialist with EverSource. And, uh, we also have, um, Valerie, Valerie from, uh, Time Bond.
Great, floor is yours.
Okay, thanks. Um, okay, so the, the before you this evening is a notice and ten application for subsurface geotechnical exploration program associated with a proposed underground one fifteen KV underground cable modernization program with placement project between EverSource Station two fifty on the Boston Everett Line and two national grid interconnects in Everett. Um, we can go on to the next slide, please. So as, as, as you just stated, um, the project is located within a public road right-of-way along Alfred Street. Um, the purpose for this co- component of the project is to gather soil, groundwater, and geotechnical information, uh, confirm existing underground utilities in advance of the design permitting and, and of the transmission line project, um, which will be coming up in the future. Um, in, in, in association with this, we'll be collecting some environmental samples um, to do some pre-characterization of the, of the, uh, the, the, the proposed alignment. Um, our test trenches, uh, we've got seventeen of those proposed within jurisdictional areas, uh, ten te- test pits and two soil borings. Our test trenches, um, are generally, um, when they're gonna be constructed, they'll be, uh, a foot and a half wide by up to fifteen feet long. Um, our test pits are going to be one and a half foot by one and a half feet, and our soil borings are generally a, um, say approximately a four-inch diameter bore hole that'll go into the street. Um, and our, our schedule is, uh, hopefully to start sometime mid to Jan- mid to late January of twenty twenty-five and have a duration of about two months. Um, go on the next slide, please. So our, our activities are located in land subject to coastal storm flowage along Alfred Street. Um, I don't have a pointer, um, but it's, it's basically from, um, actually, we can probably go to the next slide, and we can see a little bit better, um, where, where our test pits and stuff are located. As you can see, um, it's kind of hard to tell at this scale, um, but, um, but you can see, you can see in this drawing, um, some of the label, well, all of the labels for our test trenches and test pits and soil boring locations along Alfred Street. Um, and they're all located in that land subject to storm coastal flowage. Um, in, in the application itself, we do have the, the large-scale engineering drawings, and, and you can really zoom in on, on those locations. Uh, we can go to the next slide, please. So this is, these are just a couple of, of simple views of, of the, the, the proposed project area. Um, these, these pictures here are taken from across the street from our, our Station two fifty, um, over by the, uh, the wind turbine. Um, and the first one is, is looking down towards the bridge, um, our Station two fifty is on the opposite side of the road. Um, the, uh, the photograph on the right is just same, the same photo, but the opposite direction, um, going up Alfred Street towards, towards Encore. Now, our, our test pits are, are, as you can see in the, in the previous drawings, um, they are scattered throughout the, throughout the street. Um, and, um, and the, they're, they're there so we can locate utilities and, 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 you know, collect our information that we need to, to further advance the, uh, the design of the project. Um, next slide, please. Next slide. So our, our impacts for this project are, are, are limited to four hundred and sixteen square feet in the paved surfaces of the road. Um, our proposed best manner, management practices for, for this, for this, for this project uh, includes an installation of silt sacks within, within any catch basin that is located within a hundred feet of, of our, of our work area. Um, and I did count those up on the, on the, the city's, uh, catch basin mapper, and there's, there's approximately seventeen um, catch basins within that, within that reach. Um, we will not be doing any soil stockpiling, uh, along roads or, or leaving any sort of materials within, within the, within the, the jurisdictional areas. Um, and we'll be doing continual sweeping of, of our, of our work areas, um, as the work is being done. Um, all of, all of our excavation is going to be conducted using vacuum, uh, vac truck, if you will. Um, that way, we're not gonna run into banging into any sort of utilities or anything like that that's under there, that's our whole reason for doing this is, is to make sure that we understand exactly where the utilities are, the existing bare utilities are, so that they're not damaged, um, you know, when it comes to, to constructing the projects in the future. Um, and so we can design it, obviously, so that it, so that it, um, so that it works. Um, so.
That would be a aye with it, if you busted a utility pipe.
Yeah, not good, not good. So our restoration that, that we'll be doing will, um, will include uh, just essentially, um, once we take the material out, um, through the back truck, um, there's gonna be a, a hole, basically, um, that material. We're, we're most likely gonna have, we're, we're gonna be trucking all of the material off-site, we'll be, we'll be filling up the hole with, with, uh, with clean aggregate, um, bringing that back up to grade and then, uh, restoring it in kind with, with pavement or, uh, concrete plug or, or what have you. Um, there's not gonna be any sort of changes in the surface elevation or contours. Um, i- if you, if you, if you look on the, the previous photographs, you can see that there's, there has been, you know, a significant amount of work done uh, in Alfred Street, um, you know, either EverSource projects or, you know, other, other utility projects in that, in that area. Um, I think we can go to the next slide. Um, yeah, so that's questions, um, yeah, I, I will entertain any questions that the, that the commission has at this time, thank you.
Great, thank you. Just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. Calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Um, so Patrick, um, uh, off on a tangent here. Um, the, uh, wind turbine, is it operational or is it, uh, still sinking or has it been stabilized? What's going on with that?
I, I have no idea.
Haven't, haven't seen it move in quite a while.
I have, I don't think I've ever seen it move either.
No, I think, uh, maybe the geotechnical survey left something to be desired over there because apparently it's not stable. Okay, so, um, with that, uh, Elena, do you have anything on this?
Uh, yeah, so I, I think that these were a few of the questions that, um, that had come up during our site visit, but we just wanted to confirm that if anything were to happen to any of the pipes while this was happening, um, the contractor would have a plan for that, and that, for example, if there's like a spill of some kind or something along those lines, um, that that spill management plan would be submitted to us, uh, before work commenced.
Yes, of course, um, yeah, the, the, the contractor that will be, that will be selected for this work will, will be obligated to make sure that if any sort of infrastructure is damaged, that, that, that they're responsible for that. And yes, we, we will require that any contractor has a spill management plan, um, in place and that any sort of equipment will have spill, spill kit materials on, on hand and uh, th- those types of things.
Perfect, thank you. And then, um, another question, which is more might be a gap in my knowledge, and I'm not a hundred percent sure how this would necessarily work, but, um, given the fact that part of the project is trying to identify exactly where certain lines and pipes are running, is there a way that that information can maybe be accessible to other folks, like, I mean, for example, like Boston Water and Sewer might find that helpful or something along those lines, like, once this information is available, is there a way to make it publicly accessible in a way where, like, this work wouldn't have to be done in this area again, because now we know where all the lines are?
Um, I, I don't know if I could answer that with a hundred percent, um, um, yeah, because I, I'm obviously not an engineer, an environmental guy, so, um, so I don't know, like, how information sharing is done when it comes to survey, um, and, and, you know, once that survey information is, is acquired by by an entity, I don't, I don't know the avenues of how that, how that i- is shared with, um, with other entities.
Well, it's a good thing, we happen to have an engineer, um, on the line here. Um, Commissioner Sullivan, um, and lore is that plans like this go to your office, you throw them on top of a million other plans, and they never see the light of day, but is that true?
Well, the good news is, we know where the, our lines are after they drill a hole for them, so that's a positive.
There we go. So what's your suggestion, Commissioner Sullivan?
No, a couple of things, I, you mentioned that you're gonna do some, um, some borings, and then you're gonna do some excavations, maybe fifteen feet long, maybe a foot and a half wide, but you didn't say how deep.
Oh, I'm s- I'm sorry, yeah, so the, um, so the, so the, so the test pits and test trenches um, are scoped to go down to, uh, to identify the utility, if they don't identify a utility, that they're supposed to be advanced down to a, a depth of eight feet, and that's where we'll stop, um, and that'll be, that'll be a clear hole. Um, the borings, I, I believe they're, they are going down fifteen feet.
Right, so, you know, running down that street from the pump station with the dead windmill, um, is an MWRA sewer, a rather large one.
Correct, yeah, it's a, it's a forty-eight inch.
Yeah, and you're required to get a eight M permit from them. Because if they catch you doing work, it's a, it's a permit by their enabling legislation, you gotta get a permit to work within fifteen feet of their sewer.
Okay.
And a lot of your little boring spots look to be somewhere hulking around their sewer, so I would just advise you, call them tomorrow, find out what, what the deal is on an eight M permit, because if you get caught not doing it, then you get held up for quite a while. And we'll all be older when you come back and ask us for this permission again, so.
Duly noted, thank you.
Yeah, that's all, but no, this is a run-of-the-mill, um, stuff, we have a very good, uh, as-built on the location of the water mains, which you can get from the water and sewer, and we've got pretty good information of the sewers, but generally, the sewers run straight, and you look at the two manholes and you draw a line in between and you're okay. So.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Laney?
I just had a question, I was curious, um, the reason for bringing in clean fill, um, rather than reusing what was vacuumed out, is that, uh, just to ensure that you can compact it adequately?
I, I believe, I believe that's, that's the rationale.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions either, thank you.
Commissioner Herbst?
No questions.
Okay, Elena, any, I don't see any hands raised, did you get any emails?
Uh, we did not get any emails.
Okay, so with that, I would Okay. So with that, I would, uh, entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue the order of conditions.
A moved second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linnae?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries five, nothing. Thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Okay. See what you can do about the windmill. As Commissioner Sullivan called it. Um, okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP phone number zero, zero, six, uh, twenty thirteen from Collins. Engineers Inc. On behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed demolition of approximately fifteen existing fender piles. The installation of five new fender units and the installation of fifteen steel pipe piles located at one belt. Uh, yeah, one Black Falcon Avenue in South Boston. Resource areas are designated port area, land under ocean coastal bank, one hundred foot buffer to coastal bank and lands, land subject to coastal storm flowage. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Uh, thanks Chair Parker. Uh, Chris Bush here with, uh, Massport, um, environmental planning and permitting. Um, also with us this evening is, uh, Chet Myers, who's Massport's Assistant Director for Maritime. And, uh, Danielle Gudrow, uh, from our consultant team at Collins, uh, Engineers.
Hi, hope, sorry.
Oh yeah, so, so here before you with this notice of intent, uh, as noted, um, this is a installation of, uh, five new, uh, fendering units to facilitate, uh, uh, cruise ship access to the Flynn Cruise Port, Boston, uh, facility of the Reserve Channel. Um, and the Reserve Channel of South Boston, uh, I'll hand it off to Danielle, who'll go over just the, the scope and extent of work, um, as well as, uh, the resource areas involved.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. Um, it, again, I'm Danielle Gudrow. I just want to check that my audio is okay. I was having some trouble with my computer, but I'm on my phone.
It is. It's great.
Awesome. Um, okay. So again, Danielle Gudrow from Collins Engineers representing the applicant. Um, I do want to note, we have a file number for this project, um, zero, zero, six, twenty thirteen. And as Chris had mentioned, um, this project is located the poo- cruise port just south of the marine terminal. Um, it includes installation of five new fenders along the cruise port. And it's really just intended to improve flexibility for cruise vessels that berth at the facility. Um, for some additional background, there are fifteen of the same fender units currently installed at the cruise port. Um, and if you wouldn't mind just going to the first slide there. Thank you. Um, so we included these just to help you orient yourselves to the site. We've done a few of these, um, concom hearings recently, so hopefully you're familiarized with where the project's located. Um, but again, the cruise port, it's adjacent to the reserve channel and it's within Boston Harbor. And if you want to go to the next slide, please. So here we just have an overview of the Black Falcon Cruise Terminal. Um, we have the Flynn Cruise Port building basically right in the center there and to the right. Um, at the end of the pier, we have the eighty-eight Black Falcon building. On the photo on the right, that's just a look of the wharf, um, on the top side looking west. If you go to the next slide, please. Um, this is where we have some photos of the existing fender system. Um, so on that first photo on the left, you can see some timber that runs along the length of the pier next to the water. Um, this is an old fender system. It has some timber piles and basically bumpers. They're old timber whales. Um, but over the past several years, Massport has began to upgrade the fender system to the fender units that you see in the two other photos, um, to help reduce maintenance. In the center photo, you can see the timber fender system from the water, um, which again has those timber piles. And on the right side, you can see one of those newer fender units that was recently installed. Um, I'll explain a little more as we go through some of the photos and the drawings. But you can see the new fender units have this large floating foam fender in the water. Um, during the site visit, uh, Elena made a good comparison where it's similar to the bumpers that you would see on small vessels. But obviously this one is made for much larger vessels. If you want to go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Um, so here we just have some more views of the new fender units. Again, I, I say new, but these ones were recently installed. This is some of the fifteen that were previously installed, but we're looking to do the same thing. Um, if you look at the photo all the way on the right, it shows that connection pretty well. Um, so in order to install these floating fenders to the pier, we're installing essentially a concrete box. And that connects to the pier. And then it also connects to the float with chains. Um, because we have a ten-foot tidal swing in Boston, we need a surface for that floating flin- fender to slide up and down on. Um, and to help prevent damage to the concrete and floating fender, we also have some composite panels installed on the face of the concrete that helps provide a smooth surface. Um, you can see those pretty well in that left picture. It looks a little yellow. It's basically right next to that floating fender there. We also have a view from the water side too. Um, if you could go to the next photo, please. Thank you very much. Um, so the concrete boxes that you saw in that last picture, um, they're supported by three steel pipe piles each. So with five new units, that's fifteen piles. The cross section in that bottom left photo, um, it shows a good comparison of the drawing compared to the photos taken on site. You can't see the piles in the flip photos just because they're below the waterline. Um, but you can see that box structure that I've been talking about. Um, in order to stall, install these units, we will need to remove some of those timber fender piles that are currently there. Um, we'll also need to do some small demolition on the top side of that concrete deck just to integrate that new box system to the existing deck. Um, as I mentioned before, there's five locations. They're primarily close to the eighty-eight Black Falcon Building near the end of the pier. And you can see that on the plane above, uh, the hatch building on the left is the Flynn Cruise Port. And then on the right is the Black Falcon Building. And those dash boxes show the proposed locations. So we have one all the way on the left. Three kind of in the middle there and one all the way on the right side. And you can actually see the existing fender units there too. They're just those little circles shown on the plan. Um, and basically, you know, they're, they're pretty evenly spaced along the entire pier there. If you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Um, so this project is a designated port area, uh, but obviously the project being proposed is to serve maritime use and purposes. There is nineteen hundred square feet of land subject to coastal storm flowage, considering the installation of those concrete boxes at each of those five fender units. Um, for land under ocean, there's twenty-three square feet of new impacts. Um, there is fifteen square feet of removals and that's because we are removing existing timber fender piles. Um, so really total, there's only eight square feet of new total net impacts. Um, but from the piles alone, if you're not considering, um, the removals, it's twenty-three, but really it's eight net. For coastal bank, again, this needs to be installed along the pier. So we have a hundred and five linear feet. Um, and that's for the five units total. Um, other permits that we need for this project, we're also getting a permit through the Army Corps of Engineers. Um, that is in the process right now. We've submitted the application. We haven't received approval yet, but it's, it's in the process. Um, one thing with the order of conditions that we had coordinated with Elena, we did provide a couple of comments that are pretty standard. Um, pretty straightforward, but the one comment that I did want to go over today with the commission is that we don't believe that there's going to be significant turbidity generated as part of this project. Um, Army Corps actually doesn't consider pile driving to be a significant turbidity causing activity, but um, regardless of that, you know, we, we will be monitoring the piles. And if there's, you know, any significant plumes of sediment, we don't expect any really. Um, but in order to install our turbidity boom, it's a channel that has drafts up to forty-five feet. So it's, it's not very practical to install that. It's, it would actually be extremely difficult, especially in an active, um, active port, an active, um, channel. And so that's one thing that we talked to Elaine about. She did resend those conditions and removed that, but just wanted to bring that to your attention. And with that, if you move on to the next slide, it's just a, a last slide. Thank you. And I will leave it open to the commission for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so as far as the turbidity curtains, um, we did get a letter from DMF saying that they liked the turbidity curtains in the, um, uh, vibratory, vibe, yeah, I'm sorry. Vibratory pile driving. Um, so Elena, what, um, how does that stand?
Uh, yeah, sorry, just pulling up DMF's letter again.
Yeah. I mean, they didn't require it. They said it, DMF is satisfied that use of the BMPs, BMP. It should be BMP techniques described in the application narrative. For example, i.e. turbidity curtains and the, uh, vibratory pile driving with slow starts will be sufficient to avoid impacts to marine fisheries resources.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I can, if I can speak to that.
Sure, please.
Yeah. The piles that we need to drive actually need to be driven down to bedrock. Um, and while, uh, vibratory advancement, if we were driving, let's say, steel sheet piles, we would definitely be able to advance those uh, via vibratory methods, uh, but the, the pipe piles we're installing, uh, have to actually be driven by conventional methods. We don't, we don't really have the flexibility to vibrate those into place. Uh, although it's possible we could vibrate, vibrate them initially, but they would have to be proofed at the very least, uh, with a hammer.
Okay. No, that's helpful, Chet. Um, thank you. But the issue we have now is we have DMF's letter, so I don't know why they're under the impression. Well, they said it was in the application narrative. Um. I just don't know what to do about that. I wonder if, um, we need to go back to them. Cause we generally, as you know, um, we, we pretty much, um, take their comments, uh, to heart. And, uh, uh, incorporate them as special conditions. So I'm just not sure what to do about this. Elena, any ideas?
Um, yeah, I'm reading back through to see where they had maybe.
Do I have to write?
Pick that up, um. Yeah, I, I apologize. Yeah, I do feel like I need to follow up with them and just confirm that they were. I, I mean, presumably they're, uh, looking at the right filing, but like I just, if they were under the impression that those were, um, methods that were going to be used, then.
I mean, we could definitely commit to a slow start, uh, for, for pile driving. Um, and I, I hope I didn't mean to, um, imply that that wasn't possible. In fact, slow starts are actually recommended, uh, for when using, uh, a hammer to drive piles. I don't even think there is a slow start for vibratory, uh, pile advancement. Uh, my understanding, at least in the past, in my experience, has been that, uh, that vibratory installation is typically a fairly low impact activity. Typically, it's, it's, uh, sheet piles that you'd use vibratory hammer for. But if you're using conventional hammer, uh, a slow start, uh, would typically be more protective of, of fish to allow, uh, marine resources to, to be aware of a pile driving activity happening without having it, uh, be at an injury level with the, with the noise that would be generated from that. And therefore a slow start would, would allow, uh, fish to clear out of the area before the, the heavy pile driving started. And we, we have no problem committing with that.
Great. Okay. Yeah, but the problem we have, and, and that's very helpful. The problem we have is we do have this, this letter from DMF, um, who we rely heavily on, uh, for marine, uh, fisheries.
Yeah, the, the narrative does say that, um, let's see, it does mention the vibratory pile driving and then also says that, um, sorry, in-water work performed within a time of year restriction will minimize impacts um, through the use of best management practices such as a turbidity curtain.
Such as?
Danielle, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so we had submitted this at the time, um, not knowing when the construction was actually going to take place. Um, in the past, if construction had taken place during a time of year restriction for certain migratory fish, um, there have been ways for us to still install those piles, um, during that time of year restriction, but to have best management practices. Um, I think it might've been that this was used in a context of us such as, um, if we did need to perform the pile driving during the time of year restriction, um, but again, practically, if, if we wanted bottom weighted anchor turbidity curtains all the way to the bottom, it's just the, the forty-five feet is, is difficult to work around. Um, but we would suggest doing other best management practices such as, you know, maybe turbidity, turbidity monitoring, something like that. Um, it was just, we weren't sure when this project was actually going to be complete. And we are aware that there might be certain time of year restrictions for certain migratory fish.
I think, yeah, so, um, just given DMF's very sort of specific response on, on what they liked about the, the filing. Um, would it be possible for you to maybe send us updated best management practices? And we could send those or share those with DMF, um, and just see if those are still agreeable to them or if there are any additional conditions that they would want to have the commission apply, given the, the slight change.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Yeah, unfortunately, I, I see what the problem is. It sounds like you were more general. And then the DMF letter back, um, was specific. So, yeah, we have to clarify. Unfortunately, we have to clarify that. Um, I don't see any other way around it. Anyways, Elena, anything else?
Uh, no, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan? And Commissioner, uh, please feel free to opine on, uh, this issue we're having with DMF.
Yeah, um, well, first question was, how long do those, uh, fender piles last? Their fender floats, the big rubber foam things.
Quite a long time, more than timber lasts in this kind of marine environment. Um, in, and that's what, you know, without any maintenance. These kind of structures are well maintained, you know, checking the chains. That's probably the weakest point is you have steel change that, chains that connect the float to the, the concrete box. So that's where you're going to get your rust and your failures first, but as long as those are maintained, they can last quite a while in the water.
So we, Commissioner Sullivan, we first installed these in, I believe, two thousand and twelve. And, uh, I know that we've had to replace one so far, uh, of the original ten that were installed. We installed them in two phases. In two thousand and twelve, we installed ten. And then in two thousand, uh, fifteen, we installed another five. And so far, we've only had to replace one.
Right, right. And is my, my feeling on the turbidity, uh, curtain, I agree, that's way too deep. All the disturbances you do trying to put in something to protect something for fifteen pile drivings. Um, you can cause more damage putting protective stuff in the ground than you do by putting the piles in the ground.
Right, yeah. Commissioner Sullivan, we, we agree. In fact, we believe that the only way to hold silk curtains in place in that depth of water is to actually drive piles to hold them in place.
Exactly.
It would be a bit ironic since that's what we're trying to protect against. Yeah, so.
No, that's it. I, I, I agree with you on that. I mean, it's not like we're putting in one thousand feet of piles every five feet and, and everything else. This is where we're poking in fifteen of these boys, uh, and, and the protection efforts probably cause more damage than the original construction stuff.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Yeah, I remember now as you say this. That's why I asked, uh, for opinions. Um, I remember we having this discussion before and we did diverge from, um, a recommendation from DMF on these lines. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Linnae?
I just had a question about the, um, the concrete fender and that, the process for, uh, pouring that in the, the conditions.
Sure. Uh, do, do you want me to go into the process? Cause obviously we've done it a number of times. Uh, we, we would drive the piles first, uh, typically. Uh, there would be some demolition to the pier because I don't know if you noticed, but the, the box actually sort of fits into the original pier structure. Uh, the pier is cantilevered. Um, so, uh, so that's why we have to build the box in the first place. Cause there's only like a, sort of a tiny cross section. Uh, so what happens is that, uh, the box, uh, there's a platform built on the, on the three piles. Uh, typically we would provide a precast box. Um, and then if we had to pour concrete, we usually do in order to fill in the inside of the box. Uh, but the box itself serves as formwork, uh, for the rebar cage that goes inside the precast box. So, uh, there wouldn't really be a risk of concrete, you know, spilling out. I'm, I'm sure that's what you're concerned about. Um, I haven't seen that, uh, occur, uh, the last, you know, fifteen times that we've done this. And I was, I was involved in all of those, so.
That's great. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I just have a question that I know I should know the answer to, and that is, what are the fenders made of?
Uh, H, HDPE, I believe.
I'm sorry, I don't know what that is.
Uh, high density polyethylene, high density.
Yeah, polyethylene.
Okay, and, and, and uh, do they? I know you said you've only replaced one, but when they degrade, how, what, what is the degradation process? Do they release tho- their contents into the water? Is that it?
They don't actually. Um, I believe. Uh, the issue was that um, because they're, they're, they, they have foam on the inside, the, the exterior is the HDPE, but the interior uh, is foam. So they actually compress uh, somewhat uh, to essentially. Sort uh, to sort of cushion the ship as it comes in. Uh, so what they do is, is they, this one split. Uh, and uh. It, it essentially filled with water, so it couldn't compress anymore and it wasn't serving its function, but the interior did not spill out. Uh, it's not like it has like, you know, foam packaging, you know, the little foam packaging or whatever that would come out. It's, it's, it's not constructed that way. Even if it were split in half, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't spray material all over the harbor. It's, it's, it's one, it's one unit to a certain extent. Uh, but it, it does have a sort of a foam capacity to it, although it's not really made with foam. Uh, but it, it sort of has a cushioning to it. So that's the material inside. And once it really splits, it, it, when it fills with water, it doesn't serve its purpose anymore.
Okay, very much for that answer.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Are, are you assuming this is under a time of year restriction?
So, we don't, we don't know yet?
Cause I feel like that's the other question, because I think your, your proposal said you would. Expected to or intended to apply to a time of year restriction and, and DMF didn't. Reference that one way or another, so I, I just feel like it's another little. Piece of the puzzle that needs to just be clarified. Thanks.
Yeah, um, yeah, I thought you said that, Chet. That you're anticipating your uh, TOY, but maybe I misunderstood.
I, I can answer that, Chad, if you wanna.
Go on.
Let me respond. I was just gonna say, we, within our application, we said it, it could happen just because we don't know when these are actually going to be installed. It's, it's based on several factors. Obviously, events and cruises coming into the terminal. The engineering and design that goes behind it, so it. It, we left it a little open-ended and said, we don't know when it'll be constructed. It may be constructed during this time. Um, but it sounds like we, we didn't get a comment on that from DMF. I don't think I saw that come through. I'm not sure if it's maybe something that you could share as well, just so we can take a look at that.
Sure.
Actually, Danielle, did you mean the um, the email that we received from DMF?
Yes.
Perfect, yeah. And I was, I was also just gonna elaborate on that slightly, so I think that what would be helpful is maybe noting. Um, you know, what, what would the BMPs look like depending on the time of year when the work ends up happening? So then that way we can sort of incorporate. Any comments that DMF has for, you know, if this work is done during this period of time, here are the things that need to happen. And if it's done during this other period of time, then here are the things that need to happen. Just so we have all bases covered.
Right. Um, I'm not sure if, if this is something that the commission would consider, but. Um, if we're able to coordinate with DMF prior to the next meeting and come to some sort of agreement, is it possible to. Close the hearing and also approve the conditions during the same hearing? Is that at all a possibility?
At the next hearing, yes. Um. If we have outstanding issues for the order of conditions, we uh, can't close the hearing. Um, and then say, oh, and you know, we'll um, finalize, yeah. Um, but yeah, we could. Absolutely close the hearing and issue the order conditions. We've um, started that practice recently.
Oh, that's great to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I think with the um, again, I think the issue here. Um, is the more general, and I understand why you had to be general in the narrative, uh, but our. Um, comments back from DMF are um, definitely specific, so I think it makes sense to get that clarified. Though I will say. As Commissioner Sullivan mentioned, I know that we have diverged on the turbidity curtain. Uh, at certain depths, uh, because of the, the, it's causes more harm than good. Um, so, um, Elena, uh, anybody raise their hand?
I do not see any raised hands and no emails.
Any emails? Okay, okay. Okay, so with that, I would uh, entertain a motion to uh, continue the hearing.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five, nothing. Okay, thank you. Uh, see you next time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, next item on the agenda is a request for a determination of applicability from Weston and Sampson on behalf of the Boston Parks and Recreation Department. To conduct six test pits along the Mary Ellen Welch Greenway between Marginal and Porter Streets in East Boston.
And Chair Parker, I'm gonna accuse myself of this, my project, so.
Great, thank you. So the record will reflect that um, Commissioner Linay, an employee of the uh, Boston Parks Recreation and um. Now, I don't even know, Parks and Recreation Department um, has recused herself. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Hi, good evening. Um, my name's Megan Kearns and I'm a wetland scientist with Weston and Sampson, and with me is Farah. Farah, do you want to introduce yourself as well?
Yeah, I'm Farah Decac. I'm a landscape architect with Weston Sampson.
Great, welcome. Floor is yours.
Great, uh, so we're here this evening to discuss an RDA for proposed test pits along the Mary Ellen Welch Greenway in East Boston. From Marginal Street to Porter Street. Uh, it should be noted that a notice of intent will be submitted for the overall park improvements project at a later date. This submission is just. Uh, related to the exploratory test pits for planning and design purposes. Um, so as you can see in these photographs, there is some uh, pretty extreme flooding concerns along the greenway. Uh, that the overall park improvement project is looking to remedy. The figure on the bottom shows some spots in orange that are low spots. Um, existing on the right of way that are prone to flooding. You can see some of those photos in the upper right-hand corner uh. Show that uh, pretty extreme flooding. Uh, next slide, please. Um, the causes of stormwater flooding along the greenway include a high water table and some low infiltration rates. Drainage pipes filling up with high tides since they empty right into the harbor. A general low elevation, it's a pretty low spot in the area in East Boston. Um, and limited capacity of existing BPRD pump. Um, some of the solutions that uh, we're looking to a- address this stormwater flooding include green and gray infrastructure. Uh, some tide gates, pump station, decreases in impervious area along the greenway. Uh, potentially elevating the pathway and also coordinating with a butters uh, to contain runoff from their sites onto. Uh, the greenway. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, next, oh, perfect. Um, uh, so this slide just shows a, a pretty old plan of East Boston showing the site. History and the project area in red right there. Uh, next slide, please. Um, as you can see from the FEMA mapping, uh, a portion of the floodplain that connects. From the harbor back into, uh, further back in East Boston. Um, is the greenway itself, that very narrow area of floodplain, and that's where the greenway is. So the entire greenway is within. Land subject to coastal storm flowage, which is why we are here in front of you this evening, because the test pits are all located within the floodplain. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, there are some groundwater observation wells within the area. This is just uh, sort of showing that map. Um, which is uh, as I mentioned before, a contributor to the flooding on site. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so this is a bit zoomed out, but hopefully you can see some small red boxes. Those are the proposed test pit locations. There are a total of six test pits. Um, as I mentioned, they're all located in land subject to coastal storm flowage. They will be dug using a small rubber tire or track machine and they'll be backfilled the same day. Uh, the topsoil will be placed on the side of the hole and then excavated material on the opposite side, so it can be backfilled with the topsoil remaining intact. Um, we anticipate this work can be completed over the course of one to two days, depending on, on weather out on site and, and daylight. Since we're having fewer hours of daylight as well. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, just to give a very brief overview of the eventual proposed project that'll be coming in front of you, uh, we've just included a concept plan. Showing the paving improvements along the greenway, some site furnishings, improved lighting and, and planting areas. Um, as I mentioned earlier, an NOI will be submitted for um, this overall project to the commission. Uh, next slide, please. And lastly, just wanted to give a brief uh, project schedule. Um, we're looking to likely come back before the commission for the overall project. Uh, sometime this winter and go out uh, to construction in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Um, Farah, is there anything I miss you'd like to add? Uh, I guess we can turn it. Yeah, open it up for questions and discussion with the commission.
Fantastic, looks good. Final plan, looking forward to the NOI. Um, before we get going, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat. The application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Or send your questions to staff at email at cc@Boston.gov. Um, I was very surprised by how um, how high the water table is. I saw some of the site photos and that lamp post showing the um, uh, past um. Elevations of water was um, pretty eye-opening, but I had heard about that before and I. Guess I was thinking maybe there was exaggeration, but uh, there's. Uh, and, and which, and I saw the picture of the um, uh, drainage feature uh, that was filled with water. So I assume that the final design here is going to um. Uh, be more resilient than the um, present design or layout, correct?
Yes, that is, that is the overall plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think we need to understand the soil conditions and. Ground conditions to be able to determine what, you know, whether our design will go one direction or another. Um, and the next steps after that would be to go in front of Boston Water and Sewer and sort of start those conversations as well.
Yeah, and I've got just the person for you in a minute here. So, okay, um, Elena, do you have anything on this?
Uh, I do not. I, well, other than the fact that um, yeah, it was just interesting to actually get to see the site and see how high the, the water was even on a day when the tide was going out. And there wasn't really much flooding, so.
Yeah.
Um, but that's about it.
Okay, uh, I'll go to our Boston Water and Sewer rep on the uh, commission here, Commissioner Sullivan.
Yeah, I, I was curious. So you, you're doing test pits. How deep are these test pits?
I think we're saying um. You know, a maximum depth, depth of six feet. Uh, we'll have a civil engineer out on site to observe. Uh, the, you know, the soil conditions and I think we'll determine how far down to go based on that. And then about three feet wide, so two bucket, you know.
Yeah. No, I understand. It's just, you know, it, it shocks me, people saying, oh, the groundwater is high. No, the, the land is low. I mean, you, you're, you're living in a pit, so what the hell, what do you expect to find? Um, and, and I was just curious if you're looking to say, well, I need a pump station here. Cause your infiltration capacities are gonna be, maybe you get a half an inch of rain for that big, long area in the ground. But you're not gonna get that much more and you've got obligations when you put infiltration system, you're supposed to be two feet above the high groundwater level. So, you know, good luck digging a bunch of pits, that'll be fun exercise for you. And then you'll.
Yeah.
Pump station, so.
Yeah, and I think there, there is a pump station that exists on site. Um, and if, if that is what we find, then I think they'll, then we'll look at. What we, what, what we can do with that instead of um, you know.
No, I, I, I've been through this with the Pox de Popa a hundred times, so it's. And, and everyone's like shocked that the groundwater is so high. No, the land is too low, so.
We, we are, yes, we are at the lowest point uh, in the entire neighborhood, absolutely.
No, but I think it's a good idea and we, we are separating more and more of that area from combined sewers, so. There'll be more opportunity to not run long discharges from the pump. You know, to get to a, uh, to drain line that'll work. I did notice you had pump station BWSC beside it. Cross that out, put BPD or whatever, Boston Pox and Recreation.
That's fair.
Yeah, just letting you know.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Richmond?
Right, I don't have anything, thank you.
Great. Uh, Commissioner Herbst?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, uh, Elena, I don't see any raised hands.
No raised hands.
Emails.
We did not get any emails either.
Okay, so with that, I would.
Sorry, Chair Parker, hand raised.
Oh, it's Cindy, okay.
Sorry, it's me again. So I, I als- I am also not surprised that the water table land is low. My question is regarding expected outcome and what that might mean for further down the greenway, because. This is certainly a bad spot, but not the only spot. So I was just. Trying to understand what, you know, what this means for the immediate project and how you. Expect to take these learnings for next steps and obviously coordinate with Boston Water and Sewer. Cause there's lots of construction going on with the, you know, Boston Water and Sewer at the same time. Everybody's in East Boston. Right now.
Yeah, I think with the findings, I think we're, at the moment, our thinking and our approach is more. Uh, green, uh, green solutions. Um, so rain gardens and that sort of. Uh, direction, that, that's the direction we're taking, just because. We know that the pipes in the ground and all the catch basins are full of water almost always. So I think the only other way to treat it is, yeah, e- either pumping it out or you're. Uh, infiltrating uh, with uh, green infrastructure, so. Uh, I mean, the, the hope is that we'll be able to do that, but I think we, we wanna see what the soil conditions are and are they. Uh, is it possible to infiltrate? Uh, the, the soils may not, may push us a completely different way and, and um. That, that's what we need to find out.
Now, that sounds, that sounds great. Um, might I suggest there are some local organizations that you're already probably aware of, like Tree Easty. Um, that right now literally trucks water around. To try to maintain trees in East Boston so that we can improve our canopy. So there might be some logical conversations there. Um, where infiltration then turning into connections to move the water could be beneficial, just a thought.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Makes sense, absolutely.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else, so I would entertain a motion to issue a negative determination of applicability with standard erosion control conditions.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? It's all up to you, Commissioner Herbst.
Sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries four, nothing. Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll be interested to see the NOI when it comes in.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a request for an amendment to the original order of conditions for DEP file number zero zero six one nine zero five. And Boston file number twenty twenty-two dash zero five four from Howard Stein Hudson on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation. For the updated language and the special conditions for the proposed transportation improvements, including installation of a cycle track. Sidewalk reconstruction, signal improvements located at the intersection of Center Street and Walter Street. And Jamaica Plain, resource areas are twenty-five foot riverfront area, twenty-five foot waterfront area, and one hundred foot buffer to inland bank. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Chair Parker and Commissioners, hi, uh, Jason Santos. Good evening, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Doing well, doing well. We also have um, uh, uh, Bob Stathopoulos from Howard Stein Hudson. Um, to kind of help us through that. So this is, you know, this is a um, an amendment to the order of conditions. To revise some of the language that we've worked with uh, with Elena on and, and that's about it. Um, but um. If you'd like, I can have Bob go through the language.
Um, yeah, maybe just quickly, are, are you gonna fix that traffic problem there?
Yes, we'll absolutely fix that traffic problem, Chair Parker, yes.
Yeah, I, I hear it's.
Yeah, and I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna waste anyone's time. So Elena, if you think, you know, if you think that you've reviewed it with, with the commission and. You want us to just kind of sit tight, just, just let us know.
Um, yeah, no, so I, what I would recommend, the commission has the draft conditions available to them in the drive folder. Um, but what I would maybe recommend is just a, a b- brief overview of the, the project, just super high level for any commissioners who. Um, maybe weren't on staff when uh, this project was permitted, or maybe any members of the public who might still be on and are interested in knowing a little bit more about the project.
Great, great idea. You got it. And Bob will turn it to you.
Thank you, Jason, and thank you, Elena. Uh, we can go to the next slide.
So this in the section, as you may know, is included, is located in the West Augsburg area and abiding the Arboretum, I don't know, Arboretum Park. It's the center seat, the Walter Street in the section and includes the driveways of Sophia Snow Place and some of the work of the driveway of the Lutheran Trinity Church currently. So this two images below here just show really the intersection and the work is happening around there. It is along Center Street, the majority of the work, which is outside the preview of the, the commission. But the portion that is within the preview of commission is Walter Street. Before we jump on that, the purpose of the project is to provide safety improvements at the intersection as we, as you may know, there are quite a few accidents happening there. There's a lot of speeding occurring along Center Street coming through this intersection. So the one goal is to improve the safety there. Another goal is to enhance the access for all users. There's no pedestrian or bicycle crossing through the intersection and that's what this project will be providing. And along with that, the connectivity for those users will, will be, will be improved. And the traffic flow will also be improved right now. Basically, Center Street does not stop whatsoever. Unless there's somebody trying to make a left turn and kind of forces their way in, inside the intersection to make those left turns. And the same thing goes for the Walter Street traffic, literally have to force their way into the intersection today to get out of there, out of that intersection. With this in the section and the proposed signal, those issues should be alleviated. The two red circles I pointed out at this, on, on the image on the right is recent updates to the plan that was presented back in the winter of 2022 on, on the, when we were trying to get the NOI approved back then. And they include the circle all the way to the right is a median break to allow for emergency vehicle access to the Lutheran Trinity Church. Basically making it be easier for them to access the property if they're coming anywhere from the south and west. And because that median today is grass and we're replacing that portion of it with impervious area, that impervious area is getting added there is getting offset by the moving, slight moving of the driveway of the Lutheran Trinity Church. That's the left red circle right there. We had to move a little bit that driveway in order to allow for enough room between the stop line and the driveway for at least one vehicle to, to, to store right there and then provide that opening for the driveway to for the vehicles to be able to access, to access, exit the driveway. So the pervious, impervious basically got switched around over here. There's a net balance of zero. No increase of impervious area at all from this change. Now to go over to the next slide and the area under purview from the Conservation Commission, Walter Street. The, the project down here is designed to avoid alterations to the wetland. Resource areas to the maximum extent practicable. And the side, the, the work that's involved down here is sidewalk, driveway and middle overlay within the twenty five percent riverfront area, the city's waterfront area and the hundred foot buffer zone. The two circles that are shown over here is really the, the areas that are within those zones. And the one thing I wanted to point, after we had that NOI meeting back in the winter of 2022, we were requested to actually only one of the two drivers that's within that circle was proposed back then to be reconstructed. There was a comment after that NOI to reconstruct the other driveway as well. And this plan over here shows that we are doing that, but there's no, there's no additional impervious area. We're just reconstructing the existing driveway within that area. Next slide, please. So when we're looking into temporary and permanent alterations, that nothing has changed since the plan and the presentation that we did back in 2022. Payment markings, curbing is getting removed and relocated. The drainage is being adjusted and we're adding slit lights and the permanent alterations are really only seventy square feet of new impervious surface, which is the sidewalk that's being constructed with this project. Next slide, please. And when we're thinking about performance standards for this project, we are still, still meeting all those performance standards as we, they were in the NOI back in 2022. Nothing has changed since then, so there's no changes since we got those original order of conditions and the amended order of conditions is not changing this performance status. There's not changing the project meeting this performance status.
Great, okay. Thank you. I'm going to miss that left-hand turn. I always felt like a fish swimming upstream against another school of fish or whatever, whatever the salmon do in the great Northwest. So good. And I note that Kathy McCabe from Lana, she voiced her support for the project in the chat here. And Kathy, good to see you. And thanks for all the work you do over there. Elena, what do you have on this besides the the changing of the, I, I know that the issue here is we are amending the order of conditions to conform with the DCR template that we use, correct?
Correct, yes. So, yeah, so the revised conditions just reflect those changes that are now uniform across all new DCR projects that come to the commission.
Okay, good. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, is this all also being coordinated with the work that the Arboretum is intending to do down at Walter, at the old former Bussey Street?
Yeah. Bob, go ahead.
I was just going to say that exactly. Yes, we were, we've been in touch with them a lot because they are going to be taking care of that corner on their side that's seen increased pervious area, that new landscape right there. They had told us about that, the work, and what we're doing is not really impacting their work or what they're doing won't really change the commendations provided for the pets of their bikes right there. So there's no real impact between the two projects.
Right. And if I'm correct, you guys are not doing any green infrastructure despite the fact that this, you're adding impervious area and you're running the roadway runoff right down to a natural stream, the Bussey Brook. You have no green infrastructure being built at all here?
Beyond the widened corners of the intersection that is seeing the brand new green, green areas, grass areas and whatever trees are going to be planted over there, there's no other green infrastructure being proposed currently.
Yeah, shame on DCR. That's all my comment. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Laney?
Sorry about that. I don't have any questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any either, thank you.
Commissioner Herbst?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay, I read Kathy's comment. I don't see any raised hands. Elena, did you get any emails?
We did not.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to amend the original order of conditions for DEP file number zero zero six one nine zero five and Boston file number twenty twenty two dash zero five four.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very much.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a request for extension to the original order of conditions issued for DEP file number zero zero six one eight three six and Boston file number twenty twenty one dash zero five nine from Fort Point Associates on behalf of four thirteen to four nineteen Bremen Street LLC for the proposed demolition of an existing structure, construction of a one hundred sixty two thousand two hundred, yeah, one hundred sixty two thousand two hundred ninety six gross square foot multifamily residential development with ground floor retail uses, creation of ten thousand three hundred square feet of landscape green space and the installation of a stormwater management system located at three five five Bennington Street in East Boston. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Elena, what do you have on this before we go to the proponent?
Uh, yes, so the only notes that we have on this are that the, the request was submitted to us in the appropriate time, so they're okay on timeline and that it's our understanding that work has not commenced on this yet, but I think the project proponent is going to be speaking to that more.
Okay, who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Good evening, Chair Parker. Katie Moniz, Fort Point Associates, also here with Liz Bayo of Redgate.
Great.
So the three fifty five Bennington Street project first came to Boston Conservation Commission late in 2021. Obviously, the economic conditions in 2021 were more favorable than they have been recently. And as Elena noted, no work has commenced on this project as they've sought to seek lending in which to move forward with the project. We are asking that the commission consider granting a three-year extension to the order of conditions, make sure that this important work can go forward. As a reminder, this project was a mixed-use development in East Boston's Day Square. Very tied into the Plan East Boston objectives here of really revitalizing the square and creating connectivity between the greenway in the pedestrian realm and making significant improvements on Bennington Street through East Boston. There are a hundred and seventy rental units within this building. It includes ground floor retail that you can see in the rendering in front of you. And with that, I'll just do a very, very brief reminder of what the filing was for any commissioners who may have not been on the commission in twenty one. So next slide, please. Again, located here at the intersections of Bennington and Bremen Street, right at Day Square, adjacent to Masport's Hall Road. The project is currently in limited commercial use. The occupants of the site are fairly vacant at this point and the building is awaiting demolition. Next slide, please. As a reminder, this is the tail end of land subject to coastal storm flowage, which comes in through the Constitution Beach pathway and up through the greenway as well. As you can note from this, Bennington Street is much higher than the back portion of this site. Next slide, please. This is a look at the building from the Hall Road itself, so the south building elevation. Next slide, please. And this is a look at it from the easement that runs between the proposed project and the Excel Charter School, which is next door. This space, this easement that you can see between the building allows for a greater connection between Day Square. Include buses, pedestrians, and has been very carefully designed with multiple agency here to promote a more connected East Boston and really to hit the objectives of Plan East Boston. Next slide, please. Just a very broad grading and drainage plan, so you can see again the public realm and the easement on the left of this plan. Improvements all along Bennington Street, which again is the highest portion of this site. The ability to put green space at the intersection closest to Neptune Road. And most importantly, as far as connectivity out here, really improving accessibility and pedestrian safety and incorporating great public realm improvements on all sides of this building. With that, I will pass it back to the commission.
Okay, great. So economic conditions, common story. That's what you said at the beginning, right?
Correct. And Liz, if you want to shine in as well, feel free to, but unfortunately, despite many great efforts, it was very difficult to find a way to finance this project over the last few years. Does look like things are getting a little more promising here as we come towards 2025.
Okay, good. Thank you. Elena, what do you have on this?
Oh, we don't have anything further to add on this.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, these apartments are condos.
These are rental units.
Right, no, I have no other comments. Just curious.
Commissioner Laney?
I don't have any questions, thanks.
Commissioner Richmond?
Yeah, I, I was, I appreciate all of the good work that is intended by this project. I remember it was uncomfortable with it when we approved it the first time. I have no problem since it was approved in, and, and the extension was timely in it, granted. I just am uncomfortable about the the water flow, but anyway, we've approved it and, and I don't have an objection to the extension.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
I, I don't have anything, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Elena, did, I don't see any hands raised. Did you get any emails?
No hands raised and no emails either.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I would entertain a motion to extend the order of conditions for DEP file number zero zero six one eight three six and Boston file number twenty twenty one dash zero five nine for a period of three years.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Great. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Oh, I think I'm going to abstain on this, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries for nothing with one abstention. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. There have been a number of continuances, continued is, have been notice of intent for DP file number zero zero six one nine six one and Boston file number twenty twenty three dash zero five one, notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one nine nine six and Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero two one. We'll now begin our regular meeting. First item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one six eight one from David Calley for the demolition of an existing structure and construction of a three-family dwelling located at two six eight Bremen Street in East Boston. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Elena, what do we have on this?
Yes, so stop conducted a site visit on November fourteenth, twenty twenty four. There's a minor modification to the original approved plans and that is the location of the outdoor AC units. Notably, the footprint and everything else is the same. And we would recommend that the commission issue a certificate of compliance despite this minor change. The rest of the proposed work was completed in accordance with the approved project plans. And we also wanted to flag that there are a few perpetual maintenance conditions, which we would recommend including in the certificate of compliance, and those are conditions number twenty seven, forty five, forty six and forty nine.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Commissioners? Hearing that, I would entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one six eight one with the inclusion of the, I guess, the ongoing perpetual conditions, number twenty seven, forty five, forty six and forty nine.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five nothing. Okay, Elena, all yours now, administrative updates.
Great, thank you. So following up on an update that we had at the last hearing, our 2025 Conservation Commission filing deadlines, site visit dates and hearing dates have now been finalized and are published on our website. So you can see those on the Conservation Commission website. Those also went out with our newsletter. Another item that went out with our newsletter is a new filing guide, so we have updated the Conservation Commission filing guide to hopefully make it a little bit easier for folks, especially maybe people who are filing with the Conservation Commission for the first time to understand the process and know what's going to be expected of them. If any of you have any notes, I recognize that it is about a thirty, thirty-two page document. But if you do happen to want to, you know, take it up as some light reading and have feedback for us, please let us know. We'd love to hear your thoughts. And then the last update that we have is something that you're all probably aware of, but Boston is, as is most of Massachusetts, at a level three critical drought. The state has been issuing recommendations that both individuals and communities can take into account to lower their impacts and reduce their water use during this time and also on how to stay safe generally, especially since we're still in an extended fire season. So if you have any questions about that or if there are any resources I can send your way, please feel free to reach out to me. And yeah, those are, those are the updates.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, last item on the agenda is, well, actually, I'm sorry, any questions from Commissioners?
My only comment would be that the Boston system has plenty of water still because of the great planning that our forefathers did. Feel free to use water and get that revenue back to the Water and Sewer Commission.
Thank you.
That a public service announcement? It doesn't sound like one I've ever heard before.
No, but I'm looking at the Parks Department because I've noticed this.
Oh, gotcha.
They're not doing their fair share, so.
I get it.
Take care of those plants.
Okay. Um, okay, if anybody has any comments on the filing guide, um, please send them to Elena. Um, so uh, we don't have any minute, meeting minutes ready, so uh, no need to take a vote on that, right?
Good. Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so with that, we have our famous motion to adjourn.
Everybody, it's a great Thanksgiving.
Yes, thank you.
That's right.
Everyone else. Okay, we'll see you after uh, Thanksgiving break here.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks all.
Good night.
Bye.